Let's, uh, open the meeting if you will. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with open forum, and I don't believe we have anyone signed up for that. So we'll move on to number four, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Councilmen and women, if you have, have you reviewed the consent agenda? And if so, is there anything that you'd like to pull?
Yes, I'd like to pull items E and F.
Okay, E and F.
I'd like to pull item I.
Item I.
Okay, anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, accepting items E, F, and I?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, if we could, begin with item five E, please. Public Works Manager. Put you on the spot?
That's okay. I'm Kerry, I'm Public Works Manager.
Just have a couple of questions for you. I noticed that we discussed that we try to replace the, replace two each budget cycle. How many, how many trucks like this do we have?
We run a fleet of about thirteen most of the time. So we've got four front loads, four side loads running, and then some roll offs and a rear load as well, so.
So we have, so based on that, if we replace these two, what, I guess really, to get to my question, is the maintenance on the ones we're replacing, is, is that of a sufficient amount that it would? I'm just comparing the budget amendment because of the overage.
Right, right. So, a garbage truck normally, most people try to replace them at three or four. During the world that we're in now, things, ordering a garbage truck is a year, year and a half out. These particular trucks are having significant front end problems. It's actually a manufacturer defect that they don't want a warranty. And the front ends on these trucks, as they going up and down these driveways and the loads are shipped in the front of that, it's breaking the, the load springs underneath it, or actually the coupling that holds them. Sometimes they last a week, sometimes they last a month. We're spending a significant amount of money on those two trucks. And we really need to get rid of those two. They're actually worth a little bit more money right now. They're probably a year earlier than we would replace these two, but they're costing us a lot of money. So that's why we chose those two, and they're worth a little bit more on the market as well.
Just ballpark, what can we get for those?
You know, that truck might go, what will probably happen is, a lot of, a lot of manufacturers or these people that, that build garbage trucks try to buy them back. They try to go through them and rehab them and make them pretty and shiny again and sell them for a significant amount of money. We would probably, I wouldn't doubt we'd get two hundred thousand out of it. Maybe not that much, I don't know, it just depends on the market. Garbage trucks are a year and a half out. It's kind of who looks at gov deals is who we sell it to. We can put it on there for extended amount of time so that the most views get it. And it could go for a lot. And then there's times that we have put things on there that you expect for a lot of money. And, I mean, it's just hard to predict. But those two are worth a lot more money than a normal garbage truck, so.
So.
I mean, I really can't answer your question, I mean.
Right, no.
We could get fifty and we could get two hundred.
No, no, that, that makes total sense.
This auction's the way that goes, but we can put a, a reserve on it as well.
So if we order these in the very near future, what, how long are we going to wait to actually receive them?
July or August, at the earliest.
Gotcha. I just have concerns that we've, we've budgeted a certain amount and we're still sixty thousand dollars underneath.
So, there is a, I can tell you right now that they are holding this price because there's an increase going on right now. At the end of this month, they will have another increase and it can go up as much as ten or twelve percent. Garbage truck bodies are where the same, seems to be the most of the problem. All of that steel and all of those pieces and parts that go into that hydraulic system seem to be the real problem in those garbage trucks. But, for instance, the year before, we budgeted twenty something percent extra from what, what it was, and we were still under. I mean, it's hard to predict the market, but they're going up two and three times after we do our budget in the spring. It's just, it's just crazy, I can't, I can't even explain that, but.
Can't either.
Yeah, so it's.
Those, those were my questions.
Yeah, I, I, if we don't buy these now and we get ready to re, rebid them or ask for another buy board, they're gonna be more than what they are now.
Best news, we've got eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set aside, or eight hundred and seventy-nine thou, no, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Set aside, to buy, and we just, and we need the fifty-four to complete the purchase.
Yes, sir, that's what we need, fifty-four thousand.
I have a follow-up question. And if, if we're having problems with a warranty, do we have any legal recourse?
Not on that, that's, that's, I mean, the warranty's out on these trucks, on, on the frame portion of it. And it's, it's something that, that a lot of people are having troubles with, but they don't seem to want to own up to that, so.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? Have a motion on item five E.
Motion to approve agenda item five E.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay. As to F?
I move that we approve item five F.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move to item five I, discuss considering select engineering architectural surveying service provider to complete project implementation for the city in Nacogdoches, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Texas Community Development Block grant funding administered by the Texas Department of Agriculture. Yes, sir, how are you?
Good evening, counsel. Drew Flores, purchasing specialist, and I am happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
My basic question is, what are we going to do with the CDBG grant moving?
That is an excellent question. We haven't actually held a scope meeting with the engineering firm that we have awarded. That will be happening probably within the next week or two. The application is actually in the spring, so there are rules with TDA that require us to have an awarded engineer, engineering firm, and then we have a scope meeting with the city's engineers as well as them. And then we will bring that back forth to counsel to seek your consideration approval for that.
So there are a number of items that can be done with CDBG dollars. So we haven't narrowed it down, or we have?
We have, I know we've narrowed it down to two or three items that we've considered, but I, we didn't want to speculate or make any rash decisions before we heard what the engineering firm wanted to speak about. We, we're going by the TDA's rules and guidelines with regard to going through this process for application. And one of the first things that we needed to do was we needed to seek and award an engineer that can help us with that process.
How do we know what kind of engineering firm if we're not sure what we're gonna do?
I totally agree with your sentiment. The laws are a little ambiguous, that we specifically solicited an RFQ that were broad and vague because, once again, the, the list is significant. The way that this was, was set up was essentially that we're just trying to follow the, the guidelines and ensure you guys that we are following because these grants can be a little bit harrowing. We're just setting up ourselves to bring forward an engineer that can help us determine what would be best used along with our city engineers here, to see what would be, what the money would be best used for. And this is all before we even apply, we haven't actually been awarded the funds yet.
And how much money are we talking about?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I was thinking. And some of these things are infrastructure kinds of. So will they come to us to help set the priorities for that funding that we're requesting, or?
The engineering firm?
No, will the, whatever, however we're choosing what our priorities are? I mean, we've got five hundred thousand dollars to spend, and this is a little vague right now.
Yes, it is.
Yet we're choosing an engineering firm to do something.
From what I was told by our, because we've, because we've sought out a grant consulting firm, Grant Works, and then they're kind of helping us through this process. What I was told by our, our consultant, Parker Harrison, is that if for some reason we are to need any other firms or services, architectural surveying, the engineering firm would subcontract those out, and those would be covered under the funds as well.
Okay, well, let me be a little more clear.
Sure.
We have five hundred thousand dollars, we're discussing spending. I want to make sure that the council has a say in how that.
Absolutely, yes.
The dollars are spent before we have, have narrowed them, I mean.
Yes, ma'am, so, so we'll be, having it, we'll be, this is a tool award for the engineering service and firm. We will have a scope meeting with them as well as city engineers, and then we will bring that back to, in front of you all to, for your consideration and approval of the project. So you all will have a say in that as well.
Okay, I would have preferred a say earlier because, particularly because some of these are things that relate to items that we might put on a bond.
Absolutely.
So I would prefer earlier say, before we even narrow it, but.
I understand, that is a sentiment I think we, myself as well as my department all share, as well as Grant Works. But, once again, we're going by what the TDA is requiring. And unfortunately to say, if we don't do it by their ways, our application will just get denied instantly. So, but, but I can, but rest assured, when we have the meeting, the scope meeting, we will bring it back forward to you guys to, for your approval.
Well, I will take your word for it, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
One other question. On this five hundred thousand dollar grant, is it possible for other organizations to apply for the same grant?
Organizations is like, like a sub-grantee?
Right.
Yes, there is, I've actually received a couple of phone calls, I received one this morning. It's something that I'm still working on, understanding, I'm, I'm very new to the whole grant process, but I will be with, working with Grant Works to, to get a better understanding on that and try to navigate that as well.
And if they do apply and they go through the city, we have, even though we apply for that grant, we have to submit their grant, is that correct?
I believe, yeah, I believe we work in tandem with them to have their grant, to have their grant application submitted, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So when is this due?
In the spring, it's, they haven't given us a hard deadline just yet.
So we're picking the engineering firm, and that's really all we're doing? Even if we have to go into executive session to learn more about this?
Yes, and our, and our Grant Works consultant was unable to make it tonight, but he was gonna help with answering some of these questions that I may not be able to. But I, I understand some of the skepticisms that come from this. We just needed to award a, an engineer to help us understand what, to navigate the list because as we've already said, it's significantly long.
Then I'm requesting that this item be on the city council agenda at the first meeting in January, either in, at the full meeting or else in an executive session, whatever seems appropriate, given the rules for the, for awarding the funds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think that the question I was trying to clear up here was, we may not get the five hundred thousand grant totality, right? It may not be as a whole five hundred thousand?
I believe it is, I, I believe it's as a whole, I don't think it can be broken up.
Participant, sub-resident, apply for the same grant through Nacogdoches, then we are competing for the same amount of fund, not the same amount, but out of the same pot. So it's possible we won't get the full five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so this is, I forgot to introduce, Danny Hayes is here from KSA Engineering, he maybe can help clarify a little.
Or Mr. Bartlett, either, yeah.
Or yeah, or you.
The community development block grants are really five hundred per entity. So they have an amount budgeted for the region, and the state's divided up into regions. But each of the grants can be a maximum of five hundred thousand. That pays for your grants consultant, for your engineer, then the remainder goes to project funding. So if other people that, and we are competing, by the way, and, and we've competed before and have not won necessarily these grants, so. But it won't diminish the grant amount, so each individual person applying can apply for the five hundred.
Five hundred, thanks, thank you.
That answer, okay.
Yeah, that answer.
And also want to say, Drew, if you don't mind, so in part of the selection that they went through for engineering firms, I will tell you that they went through and picked a firm that had a diversity of skill sets from architecture, mechanical, electrical, civil. And so they felt like they were able to probably do a very wide gamut of projects and to help maybe ease your fears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion on number, on five I?
Motion to approve consent agenda five I.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Drew.
Thank you, counsel.
We'll move on to six A, on the regular agenda, public hearing, open a public hearing to consider a request for approval of a development plan for a PD, Plan Development District for lots one, one A, and one B, City Block sixty-four, located at twenty-two eight twenty-seven Railroad Street. This request has been submitted by Warren Sparks, case file PD twenty twenty-two dash O two, city planner.
Hi, thank you, mayor, Helena Hilton, city planner. I do want to take a moment before we get into the meat and potatoes of the presentation to just give the council a little reminder about our PD process. We don't review these all the time, so just wanted to remind the council that our plan development process is, is a three-step process. This is actually a unique zoning district where an applicant can come in and request something that doesn't quite fit into the limits of our zoning ordinance, or maybe something a little bit outside the box. So that's where the plan development comes in. It's a customized zoning district specific to that project. And so the process includes a concept plan, that's where an applicant comes forward and proposes a concept, just like it sounds, that gives some preliminary findings of where land uses are gonna go, where access will be. Very, again, preliminary concept of the development. The development plan is more detailed, it includes all of the information in the concept plan plus preliminary locations of drainageways, buildings, driveways, parking, landscaping. And then the final phase is the PD site plan, that's where we get to the construction level drawings. And that's the permitting set, where we can actually approve those plans and someone can go out and build what's being shown. So that's kind of the three-step process. And again, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews and city council approves the concept plan. The same process for the development plan, which we're at right now. And then the final site plan does get approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, so, again, this is ten point nine acres, located at the end of Railroad Street. The area is highlighted in yellow on your screen. This area consists of an existing single-family home in the contractor's yard. And back in November of last year, city council approved the concept plan for the project, for the contractor's yard. Essentially, it's like the primary headquarters and storage area for a construction contractor. And so, right now on the property, there's a small office, there's a shop, and then there's open area where the applicant is storing vehicle fleet and some construction materials. And so the concept plan that was approved in November included a phasing plan to discontinue the use after ten years and allow the applicant to move that business somewhere else onto the property. And it also included plans for a landscaping buffer along Railroad Street and a commercial screening fence, or a screening fence. So this is the PD development plan, it's a little bit more detailed than the concept plan you guys reviewed last year. It does include a change, one of the changes is the phasing plan. So the concept plan that you guys approved last year included a ten-year phasing plan to discontinue the contractor's yard. This change reduces that to four years. So instead of twenty thirty-two, twenty twenty-six would be the final year that the business is discontinued and moved somewhere else. That is being replaced by what we're calling a, a resort, short-term rental cottage-style development, including ten short-term rental cabin-style units that the applicant is proposing to use as, as a long-term resolution, including recreational activities that are part of that private lake that's on the property. So think about if you were go, if you were going to stay out of town at, at a private lake resort-style community where you had hiking and horseback riding and, and things like that, it's meant to be more of a, a recreational use. And then that will be rented out to visitors in the community. Again, this plan also provides more detail on the screening that we talked about last year. And we're gonna talk about that in just a minute, but first I want to show you guys the cabin units. So these units will be anywhere between three hundred and fifty to four hundred square feet. They'll be about twenty feet apart, and they will include a master meter that'll feed each individual unit. So these aren't going to be set up for long-term rental usage, they really will be more vacation-style short-term rental units. This is the screening material that's being proposed by the applicant. When we brought this forward, there was concern from the neighbors about screening visibility of those activities on the property from some of the residents on the other side of Railroad Street. So this is a six-foot mesh fence that'll run along Railroad Street, about four hundred and fifty feet, just long enough to screen those activities from those residents that are currently located on the south side of Railroad Street. We did meet with those neighbors and they were supportive of the proposal and didn't have any kind of concerns or anything regarding the development plan or any of the changes that have been made. This is the new phasing plan. Again, you see the shortened timeline, it was twenty thirty-two, now they're proposing twenty twenty-six to be the final year where that business is going to be relocated. And these are just some images that we took, updated photos of the property. At the top, this is the image as you're driving down Railroad Street, so you can see it's very, it's very natural, it's very kind of undeveloped. It's got a, really kind of a, a nature feel, it feels like the country in the middle of town. And then the photo on the bottom is the actual entrance into the property. These are some images of that, that U-shaped driveway that you saw on the development plan. There's already kind of a semi-paved, semi-paved surface that they'll be utilizing. These are the photos of that preservation landscaped area that's in between Railroad Street and where the development will take place. There's several natural, large mature trees that the applicant is gonna be required to maintain as part of approval of the development plan. These are some images of the lake and kind of that cottage area where the cottages will be fronting onto. It's actually quite a beautiful piece of property. And so again, this will be kind of a private recreational resort-style development. These are some images of the actual contractor's yard, so give you an example of some of the vehicles and some of the material that's being located on the property. And these will be moved to a ten thousand square foot area on the north side of the shop. And so due to the topography, you actually won't be able to see it from the street. It'll be screened from view just by the natural terrain. These are some images of the office and the shop that's there today. All right, as part of this process, we did notify six property owners. We did receive one letter of support, which we forgot to put in the packet, but I did put a copy of it at your place, so you have a physical copy. That's from a property owner to the north. And again, we did visit directly with the property owners to the south, and they were supportive of the project as well. These are the conditions for approval of the development plan. Essentially, we're looking for compliance with the concept plan the city council approved. And staff does find that it is compliant with those couple of changes that we talked about. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at the regular meeting on November fourteenth and recommended approval as presented. And so, before the council, you have a couple of different options, you can approve the PD as we presented it. You can approve it with additional conditions if you find it necessary, or deny the PD altogether. And the applicant is also in attendance if the council should have any questions. So with that, I'll conclude staff's presentation and open it up for questions from the council.
Okay. Will I have a public comment? First, Mr. Sparks, do you have anything to say, or just answer questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as y'all say yes, I'm doing it.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to make comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. Gromm from the school board, Nacogdoches County. I just want to see, is this the lake that's between the two carpenter schools? So does this, this doesn't have anything that would be affecting our, the new school? There would be nothing, okay, I'm just, I, I, I was not aware that this was going in in that spot, but that's great. So, it's good that we're developing, but, but I'm just worried about my, my children, my responsibility. But if y'all have already looked into it, that's all that matters. That, that it's.
Going on as far as, I mean, it'll be.
Well, like, you know, you can't have this close to a school and you can't have that. But this is all just recreational and, and like, recreational activities and recreational places to stay. There's not gonna be any kind of party and stuff like that, it's not gonna be like a dance place or something like that, not a, not a honky-tonk or anything.
Okay, let me, I'll, I'll get Mr. Sparks to answer that, any other questions?
No, that's it, that's it.
All right.
I just, sometimes we don't think about the neighbors, because it's, it's, it's a school, it's an entity. It's, we don't, I don't know about who's got any letter from our, from us, but I'm just a school board member, but I'm just speaking as a private citizen, not, not for the school board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sparks, you want to talk to that, please?
Yeah.
Up, up here, I, I need you to come to the front. It's all recorded, so I need you on the speaker.
I'm just short about three-quarters of miles from the school, the new school, you know, and I said, I said if you didn't know where this, this was at, I was, the, the old school backed up to my place. And so with that school being closed and the new school, you know, that old new school was out there on the loop, so it's, it's a long ways, you know, from the new school.
Okay, what, what kind of activities do you expect?
We, nothing but, you know, probably like you said, horseback riding or pedal boating or anything like that. Nothing major, no parties or anything like that.
Okay, thank you, thanks, sir. Anybody else have a comment or questions? Okay, thank you. Counsel, any, any questions or comments? Mr. Huckamie?
I do have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Hilton. Can you just give me a brief overview of what led us to this point? Just because I wasn't on the council when the, the PD concept plan was approved.
Yes, so Mr. Sparks has been operating a contractor's yard at this location for several years. It's also the location of his primary residence. This all stemmed from a code complaint that we received about noise from heavy trucks going down that roadway. And upon investigation, we found that there was a commercial business taking place on the property. And then when we approached Mr. Sparks, we gave him some options, one of those was a zoning. And, but we didn't want to zone it indefinitely for commercial uses. We, council really wanted to give him time to, to relocate that business somewhere where it was more appropriate while not shutting them down altogether. So this process allowed us to do that, allowed us to, allow him to come into compliance over time while not losing any income directly. Does that make sense? Okay.
I think that's all I have for you.
And it was over an extended time and a number of meetings. I think even the council before, Councilmember Bellinger and I, again, I think they were already talking about it, weren't they? I think so.
I'm pretty sure.
Anyway.
Yep. Why the reduction from ten years to four years? Is that just so that Mr. Sparks can get a move on, on, on the new business? I believe so, I can let Mr. Sparks speak to that directly.
Yeah, I actually was gonna look.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Actually, the four years, actually I thought it was six years, to make sure I give myself. Yes, I would like to do it, if I could do, we could do it in four, we could do it in two, I'm ready to get started on it. Because with the, with the process, with the city, you know, and now, because what it did was, it limited my business because we can't leave before six, and so then we lost a lot of contracts because we can't get there on time. And so I want to get this pushed on because if, you know, if I wait any longer, then I'm gonna have to come out and ask y'all if y'all hiring. But, so, yeah, I want to definitely get it, you know, try to get this pushed on so I can get started on it. Because I actually have some buildings that's ready to be moved in, but we can't move them in until we, you know, get the okay.
Good.
Sounds good. And then I have, this question might be for, or is for Ms. Hilton, thank you. Ms. Hilton, you mentioned that you met with some property owners to the south.
Yes.
How did you guys meet? Was there a neighborhood meeting?
Well, there's only two residents that live along that portion of Road Street, Mr. Connolly, and then there's another lady. We just had them come into the office, went over the plan with them in person, answered any questions that they had. And so that was, that was the process for that.
Thank you for doing that.
And Mr. Connolly had been the one that objected earlier when we, and, and we finally came to this, this agreement.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Spark. On a yearly basis, we normally hold our family reunion at Lake Conroe. And it's similar to what you're proposing with the cabins. But they also have one large location where there's a pavilion, or inside pavilion, in case the weather's bad. Because they rent out the cabins to families at, at particular times. I mean, I know they may object to what they consider parties, but to me, that's not a party, so. I would suggest maybe one good-sized pavilion, or maybe a inside house where they can host events inside. Because that's a great idea, love that idea.
Thank you, that's, that's a good idea too, to have something like that. You know, to be able to host something, in that sense.
Okay, Councilmember Bellinger?
So I think my question is for Ms. Hilton now, but thank you.
Why don't you stay over here, go back?
Stay close.
Stay here.
Musical chairs here. So I, I do believe the school district still owns the old property, the old carpenter property.
Yes.
I would, because once the plan development is approved, then we don't have. I would, because once the plan development is approved, then we don't have to come back and forth. I think it would be very wise to put in the plan development that it has to comply with all the school, with any school conditions or just in case, for example, there's a lot of alcohol or something in one of the, in, in one of the reunions or, I don't know. I guess my question is, I don't know all the provisions, all the requirements for, in a school district, but now you're frowning. So you're thinking that the school district will have to enforce it or, I think it's an excellent question.
The, the questions you're asking, concerns you're raising about location are things that are found in the statute. And they have to be complied with regardless. So like, for, for example, alcohol sales and that sort of thing. Those are location specific tied to the statute and we have to, we have to apply those. And our code doesn't have to do that. And your zoning doesn't have to do that. It's in the statute and it's going to apply regardless of whatever you do. So you don't need to be worried about that. If you're thinking about other things that the school district might have, they don't have regulatory authority, so they can't regulate. So the only thing they can do is like any other property owner, they can ask their neighbors not to do certain things or to behave in certain ways.
No, I'm actually talking about things that are required not to be in near schools.
So that's statutory and you don't have to worry about it.
Well, I'd like our city to kind of, you know, follow up or to have some kind of, if we're
Yes. So if, if, if the applicant were to apply for an alcohol permit that goes to the city, and then we would check for those distance requirements at that time. So we check those for any kind of alcohol permit that comes through in our jurisdiction.
Likewise, with a sexually oriented business or anything that could be classified as that, there is a process and it's going to
So, so I, and this is just a recommendation for you that, that you might want to look and see what regulations there are about what can be operated in your schools.
On, on that note, I'm a Christian man and right now there is no alcohol, period. I don't care what we having, you know, we don't, I don't have anything like that, you know? You're lucky to be, you, you gotta walk down the road to even smoke a cigarette. Cause I don't smoke either. You know, I'm kind of a hell fanatic, so.
Well, again, I'm not, and when we're talking about planning and zoning, to, to me, I, I'm concerned about not necessarily you personally, but if, if this is zoned this in this plan development, you know, whoever after you are, I'm just concerned that
And, and you start with the school, I, I don't know who I would talk to, but with that old school, you know, I would like to buy it too if it was sale. Cause I like to join, you know, everything around me. That way you can, we don't have an issue with the school for everything to go back on over there again.
Well, I just think it's a good question. I'd like to follow up and see the kinds of things. And if we don't have to include it as part of this plan development, that's fine with me. But I think it's, it's a good thing to, to know about and to start, and to start thinking about.
So the alcohol and other noxious uses is, is regulated by statute and that's going to apply. And we'll put it through the normal enforcement mechanisms. Anything above and beyond that, I don't know what it would be. And you're not being specific, so it's kind of hard to put it into the plan development.
Like you're not being specific because I don't know what the rules are for things by schools. So anyway, I, it's something to follow up on. And I'll, I'll let planning and zoning, cause it's going to come back to planning and zoning, deal with it if there's something that comes up. But I do think we should kind of follow up and it just, it's a good question.
I understand. So right now there's no alcohol sales proposed. And if a permit was applied for, then the city would be one of the first to know.
Okay, anybody else?
Ms. Hilton, I have one for you and then a couple for Mr. Sparks. What is the, we may not know this now, but what is the, the proposed zoning at the end of this PD? I mean, there's, there has, it has to have a zoning classification.
So PD is the zoning district, PD is a zoning district. And so the only uses that are going to be permitted are the cabin short terminals and the single family home that's there today. Any changes will require zone change to come back to city council, just like we do any other zone change. So to answer your question, the zoning is PD for a recreational resort style, short terminal cabin and one single family home.
Gotcha.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
All right.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Sparks. I don't feel comfortable calling you Mr. Sparks. Also, when I, when I looked in the agenda, I saw Warren. I said, that's not his name. Just for, for background, we both attended school in Martinsville and I've known him all my life. This proposed move of your business from where it is now, the, the develop, is it the concept plan that that's in or the development plan is? Twenty twenty-six, are you prepared to do that by twenty twenty-six? That's four years from now.
I'm pushing. I want to get it pretty quick. But I'm trying to get this done and I'm ready to, to get it moved, get it done.
My other question is, when you're moving that business, not that it's relevant to the zone change, but are you planning to stay in the city or are you moving it outside the city?
If I could find some outside the city, I would definitely move outside the city. But I, I probably, it's probably still being in the city.
As part of the approval, we can also add a condition to extend the timeline to twenty twenty-eight if the council feels like that would be necessary upon the applicant's request.
Yeah. Yeah, if we could, yeah, twenty twenty-eight would be great. That way I can, I don't box myself in and then, you know, probably twenty twenty-eight.
I like your plans. I, I'm glad that you're, you're doing something with it and you're not just completely leaving the place. I, I really appreciate that you've, you've found a way to make this work. And I think you're to be commended for that. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's something that we need on, on that side of, on that side of the town. I don't want any more apartments. I don't want any more housing. I like some that we could, you know, really enjoy. And as a family with kids, something like that. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the PD with the condition that the business be moved by twenty twenty-eight, not twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, this public hearing is closed. We'll move to six B, consider the approval of resolution of support from the city of Nacogdoches to the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of multiple crossovers on Northwest and Southwest Stallings Drive, Loop two twenty-four. Chief of Police Weems.
Good evening. Scott Weems, Chief of Police. And I'm here to I'm here to talk about the crossover closures. And so after the last fatality accident, we decided that we might need to look at closing some of the crossovers because the accident happened at a crossover and it was a very tragic accident. And it made us realize that for the long, for the longest, we've had several accidents along the loop, six hundred and sixty-seven, I believe, if I'm counting right. And had three fatalities. And this is since two thousand and nine. And so we learned that TechDOT throughout the, in the recent past has recommended that we close some of the crossovers, which eventually are going to be closed anyways, since I sixty-nine is in the process. So we drove the loop. It was myself, Mr. Canizares, the fire chief, and Steve Bartlett. And so we, we, we looked at the crossovers. We looked at the site distance for each crossover. We looked at the width of the, the median for each crossover. And we determined there was, there's eight crossovers, by the way. We determined that there were several crossovers that were highly dangerous compared to at least two that we might could live with. And so we decided to take it to a town hall meeting. And when we did, we, we got opinions from several of the business owners in that area. And so we, this, what we're trying to do is collaborate with TechDOT and our city to close at least six of these crossovers. And this map, we will come up, we got another map. This one's a little small, so it's a little hard to see, but it shows the crossovers that we're looking at. And that's just another version there. But I did provide y'all with a, or actually Steve Bartlett provided y'all with a map. It's a lot easier to read. And you'll see that the red, the crossovers in red are the ones that we proposed to close. And the crossovers in green are the ones we would like to try to keep open. And I got a video here showing the crossover right in front of Motor Homes of Texas where we didn't get a call. It wasn't an accident, but as you see, it was a near miss. And so there's, there's countless near misses on the loop, especially with the speed limit being at sixty-five. And so this is what we're trying to prevent right here. And if, if you'll look at that again, that, that motorhome pulled straight out and crossed over and, and blocked both lanes of traffic. Well, that's what we're trying to prevent, the straight, straight on exits into the crossover. At least we need them to, to start getting parallel and getting the deceleration lane to where they can turn around safely or safer. And so that's, that's what we're dealing with. That's what these business owners are seeing every day. They are hearing the tire screech. They look out and they see these near misses. And sometimes they're not near misses. Sometimes they're major accidents or fatalities. And this is just in the street, Texas. That's a, it's a campaign that TechDOT is trying to bring awareness to the long streak of traffic deaths in Texas. And they, they estimate that there's one person every day on Texas roads that die since November seventh of two thousand. So they're trying to end the street and we need to help them. So after these turnarounds or crossovers are closed, now this is, this was the beginning when I made this. And so that was when we were going to try to close all eight, but now we're, we're trying to leave two open. But the travelers on the loop will be able to turn around at South Redonia, which is Highway seven, Durst Street, two twenty-five, Douglas Road is twenty-one. Old Tyler Road is at sixteen thirty-eight, and then North Stallings Drive and Industrial Drive. Now the ones we're trying to, what, what we came across was the ones between Douglas Road and Old Tyler Road. That's the longest stretch. And so that's why we looked at the number three crossover. And that's kind of in the middle. And it's got a good sight distance both ways. And it's got a, the median is wide enough to work. If you did have a, a large vehicle, that you'd be out of the way for the most part. And it's a parallel. It's not a, it's got a deceleration lane and it's parallel with the road. There's no straight across crossover. So it would be the safest to keep open. And it would, would provide those businesses about a halfway mark for their customers to use the crossovers. So if you'll look at this map, we, we located the businesses, we went ahead and identified the businesses by the crossovers and the ones that would be affected. The one affected the most, basically, there would be a lot of them affected, but after talking to the public and the business owners, the motel would be affected the greatest since it's located halfway between Old Tyler Road and Douglas Road. And so we, we opted, and, and there's other businesses in there, but we opted to look at, that's why we opted to look at number three, to try to keep it open. And we're going to monitor number three and number six between now and, if this gets adopted, we're going to monitor number three and number six to see what, how many accidents are caused there. It is gonna, it is going to increase the traffic down to Douglas Road. And there is an issue down there at Douglas Road. When you're trying to get northbound on the on-ramp, it's very short on-ramp. It's got very little merging lanes. And it's got businesses along the, the side that, that are right there as you exit. So we need to, we need to monitor that too. We, what we don't want to do is divert the accidents to that location. So we have to take into consideration all of these factors in order to provide the safe travel, plus the convenience for the businesses. My suggestion and a lot of the comments, can you put the comments up, please? A lot of the comments from the town hall meeting were that we need to reduce the speed limit to fifty-five. I'm a proponent of that. I, I agree one hundred percent. And I, I think everybody with us at city that's involved in this agrees. Especially with the congestion down at south, the south end of the, the corridor. What happens is that red light, South Street at the loop, once it, once it turns green, you've got about a half a mile of congested traffic coming your way northbound. And sometimes there's enough gap in there that, that these other drivers trying to exit the businesses want to take the chance, as you can see with, with the, with the big truck. And so that's what we're trying to prevent. If we can reduce the speed to fifty-five, I believe that would, would help alleviate some of that. And hopefully, when TechDOT gets I sixty-nine or gets that portion of it completed, that would make the flow of traffic fluid. And you wouldn't have such a congestion and, and high risk. So, but yes, we would like to go to a speed limit of fifty-five and enforce it heavily. So.
Okay.
Any questions?
We'll entertain public comment. And then, so if you'll stay around, we'll probably get to need you. And, and what we're doing tonight is considering a, a resolution on behalf of the council that would include the last map that Chief Weems showed you that had the three, four, five, six closings and the two left open. And then also lowering the speed limit is part of that resolution as well. Is there any public comment? Okay. All right. Counsel, comment, questions? Councilmember Bellinger?
I just wanted to thank you for going in, you know, following up and looking at this, all of you with so much depth. It is heartbreaking to see so many accidents and, and deaths. And I know, I, I think it's helpful to add that, that, that some of the business owners themselves came to you and said, please close this crossover.
Correct.
I believe Motor Homes of Texas.
Right. And there's the comments
Right.
that we have too, that you have a copy of. So.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Bolden?
Chief, one of the things that I know that the closing is going to put more traffic burden on Old Tyler Road.
Yeah, sure.
One of my suggestions would either be make all of that a four-way stop sign or put up a signal light. Because it's not a fun place right now.
I don't like it either.
Yeah. So you see the, either four-way stop signs or a, a signal light
Right.
for that location.
I believe that's going to have to go through TechDOT
Yeah.
to do that.
But I'm in agreement also with the fifty-five miles an hour speed limit because the rest of the loop has that also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bolden, the request actually isn't for you, the city council, to close anything or for you to set a speed limit. The request is to ask TechDOT to study all of this
Right.
and take what are the actions are necessary to get to that. We didn't specifically reference stoplights, but I believe that they would consider traffic flow as part of the overall plan anyway. So I think that would be included in the thing. But if you would like to make a motion, when you, when you make a motion, to add consideration of traffic lights at appropriate locations, we can certainly incorporate that and make sure they understand that that is a concern of yours.
Thank you.
Quick follow-up question to that. So then this is just saying, hey, TechDOT, will you look at this? This is what we would like to do. And then they can do all or some or none.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And then my only question for you, Chief Weems, is the recurring comment that I see from business owners is that number one is safe and please don't close it. I see a fatality star next to number one. So what's the, I guess, difference in understanding there between business owners saying that that seems safe and isn't causing problems?
Actually, that's an opinion of one of the, the people that were there. Number one is almost right next to, or right down Number one is almost right next to, or right down the road from where the truck did, and that was number two. So what's happening at number one, if I can remember correctly, it's kind of catty corner to that fitness knack. And I know I've personally seen a lot of the northbound traffic take a catty corner in the wrong direction going into there, those two businesses, and which is illegal in and of itself. And so I, I don't see where number three is going to be a hindrance if we keep it open for that business. They can come southbound, turn into number three, and then turn right back up to northbound. Now, trying to get to the business, if you're going northbound, you really needed to do it the legal way anyways, which would take you down to, to Old Tyler Road.
Right.
And turn around and do it properly and safely. So I looked at that and I decided that that was a moot point, since it's illegal to do what they're doing anyway.
Well, may I, may I add also too, when, when we went to, when we received the feedback from, from that business owner, it was also with the, at the understanding at the time that we're looking at closing on all, closing all eight.
Okay.
So the feedback was received, I can't remember if it was during the meeting, if she attended, or it was received afterwards. But it was under the caveat, they were looking at closing all eight, and it was once we started seeing the feedback at the coun, excuse me, not the council meeting, at the public meeting, at the community meeting, and the feedback is when we were, when we were saying, you know, let's look at a couple of other safer alternatives as far as some, keeping a couple of them open. And so as, as Chief Weems alluded to, number three is really close. So that kind of gives that relief route, if that makes any sense, that relief valve.
And, and so we're assuming that that would help alleviate some of the concerns of the CrossFit business owner, but we don't know for sure. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Hookby?
Chief Weems, we've talked about this pretty extensively, but I'm going to ask you a few questions. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, each one of these crossovers is in my ward. And so I've, I've taken a pretty in-depth viewpoint on, on all of it and studied them. One of the concerns that I've heard a number of people suggest is, like other council members have alluded to, the idea that this will push traffic to turn around at Douglas Road and at Old Tyler Road. Do we have any means of quantifying that? Do we know how many vehicles we're actually talking about pushing to those places?
We would have to do a study and come back later.
And so that's, I know that's one of the things that was asked for in one of the anonymous comments that we do, see if Tech dot, in their study of this, will go and see how, how much traffic we're actually talking about pushing to those places.
Right.
It seems from what I've heard is that the, the turnarounds impacting the businesses, the bigger concern is not the convenience of being able to turn around, it's the fact that you have to add potentially five miles of travel if you have to go to a place north of your south based on where you're at. As someone who lives not far from one of these crossovers that has already been closed, I understand the inconvenience of having to go farther to go to South Street or to go. What, I know the discussion around speed limit has been, we want it to go back to fifty-five as it was. Tech dot raised that speed. I don't, do we know exactly when that was, when they raised it?
They've done it several times. I know they raised it to seventy at one time, and then they knocked it back to sixty-five. And I know that was before the construction started. So now that the construction is well underway, I do believe they need to take that into consideration and drop it back down to fifty-five.
So I, I know that you said in that point that we were going to heavily enforce the speed limit there. And I know you and I have discussed this at length, the, our staffing issues at the police department. What mechanisms, how can we help enforce the speed from Old Tyler Road down to fifty-nine South? What, what are, what can we do?
Well, we've already, we've already addressed that with our K nine officers. I know we've got two. So at, at one week, one's working the actual criminal part, the K nine part. And then the other one's working traffic. They're, they're seen out there all the time. And I know when you go home, you see at least one or not, if not two in the past. And so they're highly visible, and that, you know, mere presence does prevent some of the speeding. But we have started enforcing the traffic laws on the loop, and I know the highway patrol is starting to come out also, so.
Have we engaged the sheriff's department to see if they can help with that also?
We can, but they're about as strapped as we are.
That's, that's my understanding also.
Doing what we can to keep our head above water.
Could we put a speed trailer in that area where it drops to forty-five for the construction zone? So people know how fast they're going and that we, I mean, just, I know the one at two fifty-nine, fifty-nine has red and blue flashing lights. I know the county owns that, but it, that really helps you see, oh, you're actually going way faster than you should.
So on the speed trailer, that is strategically placed in certain areas for other reasons. And I would have to check into that to see if we were able to get another one just for that. But the ones that we have are utilized for other reasons also.
Gotcha. I think that's one of my, my concerns, not just for you, but as we make this, adopt this resolution, I want to take into consideration the businesses. But the reason why we're discussing this is because of safety.
Right.
And we've had six hundred and sixty-seven accidents and eleven fatalities in this stretch of highway over the last twelve or thirteen years.
Right.
And we know that those crossovers will close eventually. So Tech dot could decide tomorrow they're closing them all. They asked us what we thought because we can engage with the residents and, and see this. I would like for us to approach Tech dot and consider having maybe a U-turn turnaround at Douglas Road where some of that is not as unsafe as it is, where you could make a full U-turn without having to stop and, and have some of those traffic issues. I know they're doing that at South Redonia as part of this flyover project.
Correct.
And perhaps seeking funding to do a, an overpass or something similar at West Austin. That way you could mitigate some of those distances for when, I want to solve the problem down the road, not just today for the safety. Can we solve it as we move forward? So if we, if we included those things, I would be happy to consider leaving two open. But if we're not trying to look for a permanent solution, I would much, I would feel much better with just closing all of them.
Right. Well, the permanent solution is forthcoming, and that's the feeder roads that I know they're working on right now in Angelina County, and they're slowly working their way here. They're going to get this project done, and I think they'll move into the Garrison Y after that and start that one. I know it's a long way down the road, and I don't know if Tech dot would be willing to spend good money after bad and try to go ahead and, and do what they're asking to do now, and then five to six years later have to come back and tear it down and start over with the feeder roads. So that would be something that we would have to go to the table with them and see if they're willing to do that. But that's a very costly project for a short period of time. So we could be pretty convincing, but I don't know if we're that convincing.
Let's get, Steve Bartlett, could you come and talk, you, you deal a lot with Tech dot. Can you talk to us about what, what things we might put in this resolution to spur the activity from them?
Sure, and, and remember, tonight is just for you to identify a request to Tech dot. So we still have dialogue. Tech dot has not been provided this, and we have obviously had early conversations with them. But the last conversation, it was a slate that we were looking at, so, so there's more dialogue to go, so realize that tonight. And so what I think is some version of language that might say something like, and this is in response to the signal light kind of discussion, traffic controls and roadway improvements to accommodate and support the best practices for traffic, traffic safety resulting from the closures. That means that we might look at extending ramps, you know, it means we might look at putting up stop signs, it means all, all kinds of things. So let them look at geometry, pavement improvements, and traffic controls, whether it's signals or other types. That's their, that's their expertise. And so part of this is probably going to be, and it's the way we, in the traffic world, respond, we do this, and we need to see what that act, the actual impact is. So, and, and I'm being silly with numbers, but if we're adding ten people U-turning under Highway twenty-one a day, it's probably de minimis to the overall traffic. If we're adding a thousand, it's, it's certainly an impact, and obviously it's in between. But, so I said, I think we do this and we move forward and see what the impacts are. The good news is, turning them at these intersections, even though they may not be functional with, with free-flow U-turns, we're now moving traffic in the same direction. So the merge is uncomfortable, but that's much better than, than a cross-traffic condition. And so even if there are some accidents, and there will be accidents, I think it's an improved situation immediately from what we're doing, so. But anyway, if we can use some wording like that, that requests Tech dot to move forward, because there may be three or four projects there that they bundle from safety monies and other things to do that. So Mayor said.
Okay, yes, that's what we were.
Mr. Bartlett, I have a, an additional question, because I know you've been in dialogue with Tech dot, at least preliminarily on this. What is their position? What would they like to do? I mean, I know they've asked us for our opinion, but what is their?
Sure. So they, they, they've said informally that, and this includes visits with the Lufkin District Office and the area office here, that they would entertain the closure of up to all of them. So we talked about leaving some open for emergency vehicles, we talked about closing part of them. They basically said, well, we would support even the closure of all of them. Because remember, their focus is safety and moving traffic. That's what they're trying to do. So they see that as a benefit. So I, I do believe that they'll adopt whatever you come up with tonight, because I think they're in support of up to all of them.
Okay.
So I think one of the, I, I actually came to the meeting and visited with Tech dot and visited with business owners. And one of the business owners talked about unintended consequences. And I think that's what several of the council persons have referred to right now. And, and including the short ramps to get on and what's going to, how is it going to back up? And will they even back up on the highway? And I'm hoping that in your discussions, or maybe we could add a, a little bit of language that gives some freedom for them to make judgments and to do tests. One of the things I wondered is if maybe we could close them, the ones we're talking about just with temporary closures, and actually monitor and see what happens and see if, you know, are they backed up on the highway actually? That was one of the questions. So, and I'm sure you all have looked into that quite a bit, but we really don't know how many people are going to have to get off and how they're going to have to get on.
And we don't know that either.
Right.
So remember, this is their backyard, this is their road, this is their traffic study and their responsibility. So I don't know exactly how they're going to respond or react. We're going to initiate those discussions if you tell us to move forward. So I, I agree with you, and I think there's unanswered questions from engineering standpoint. And so I think we need to rely on them to do what they do and, and try to field through the safe alternatives to this.
Along the lines of what you said that we might add, that description that you had.
Yes, sir.
Would we not specifically say we'd like to see them lower the speed limit to fifty-five as opposed to just lower it?
Yes, I think they would, if you don't, I think they will request for you to literally possibly, even in a separate resolution, and we'll find that out, we'll come back if that's the case. But have a resolution specifically addressing two things, the speed limit and the beginning and ending of that speed limit in, in a particular resolution language.
So I'll, I'll jump in there. You asked them to do the speed study, the speed study tells them what number it should be. And then they come back to you and ask you to adopt an ordinance setting the speed limit for that portion of the road within your city. So you get several bites at that apple.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if it was up to me, I, I would put it in this resolution we offer now, then we're certainly glad to listen to the speed study again. But I would, rather than just saying lower the speed limit, I'd say lower the speed limit to fifty-five is, is what.
You can, you can say that.
Yeah.
They're...
We can put anything in a resolution.
They're going to do a speed study, and they're going to set the recommended speed by the speed study, and they're going to ask you for a resolution of that. When it comes time.
I, I'd like to make a motion.
I'm going to ask one.
Okay.
Other thing, and, and you might include it in your motion. So if we, if we include language, I, I keep thinking of one of my favorite quotes in planning is today's problems were yesterday's solutions. And, which you well know in engineering. But maybe if we can include language that says including testing of these, of these options, and instead of just, we definitely want to do it, I think that would be helpful. And so maybe you can put that in your motion along with your speed limit.
And that's kind of what I meant, Mayor, by, by the word best practices.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I agree.
Testing, studying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
I have one more comment if I could. My, another concern that I just thought about when Councilmember Bellinger was mentioning the unintended consequences of whatever we do or whatever Tech dot does, if we leave those two crossovers open, all of the traffic that would have gone to those other crossovers will now be at two crossovers. And so if we're talking about stacking up at Douglas Road on that exit ramp, that's still much safer than having traffic stacking up at a crossover. Which, as I was heading to that meeting at the Expo Center, crossover number three, I had a, a truck with a trailer trying to turn around there, and I had a UPS truck on the other side merging or turning onto the loop. And I had to straddle the, the center line to not hit both of them.
Understood.
So that, that's the unintended consequence I'm most concerned about.
And Councilman Hookby, I think what will happen is a mixture. I think some folks, the actual turnaround and interchange is now closer, depending on where they are in relationship to those. And others are then going to look for these two remaining crossovers, which will increase their volume. I think both volumes will increase, is what I'm trying to say. There, it, there's no doubt, and Chief and I've talked about it, we're, we're moving problems around. And we're not coming to you tonight to say this solves everything. There's no such thing in traffic, I will tell you. We can put up signal lights and just change the kind of accidents we have, you know? So we think this will improve it. We think it will lower the risk for the kind of collisions, high-speed collisions we're having. I don't think it will eliminate a hundred percent of collisions, so understand, we just think it's an improvement that hopefully will save some lives.
I'm going to say one thing. The traffic, as far as speed limits between Old Tyler Road and South Street, Tech dot has already done a study, and they, because it was originally sixty-five all the way to South Street. Now it's six-five, forty-five, and they've already done a study. So if we just say fifty-five, that takes away what the study Tech dot has already done. So I'm, I would say lowering the speed limit and let Tech dot do their study and determine what the speed limit should be.
And, and you previously passed a resolution requesting speed limits be lowered, and I will just use the word in the construction zone area was really the basis for it. And so they did look at that and studied it and concurred with that. The forty-five is not a forever thing. This is an interstate, a baby interstate facility. So I agree with you, and, and they do, about every couple of years, they do speed studies, and they may have data now. Or as Mr. Kirkland said, they may go get new, new data to see what their volumes are. But that's what we're just asking them to do, is to come up with the best alternatives. We're telling them what we would like to see as a result.
Mr. Bolden, would you like to offer a motion?
And we have to add, and...
Steve's, Steve's got his piece. It'll be the studying and the thinking.
You can just say include that piece, I think Jan can get it, if that's okay.
Jan, you have it written down?
No, no, go ahead. No, that's...
Six B?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve a, a resolution of support from the city of Nacogdoches, Tech dot. Were we going to do all eight and still do the six-two?
Six-two would be my preference, but I mean, you, you're making the motion.
Well, I'll make the motion that, as the closure of six multiple crossovers and allow, I don't know, the three, three and number six crossovers to remain. And also the study of...
Steve's language concerning the
Yes.
study of traffic patterns and other enhancements that, that Tech dot may, may.
Correct. Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, you have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
Um, I just would like to make sure that, that those specific, if we're saying we're going to, um, close six and keep two open, that, that that be our recommendation if the study supports that. So I, I, I don't want to really amend a motion, but is that clear enough?
Is that friendly? I think we can, we can live with that.
Is that okay?
Mr. Baldwin, is that okay?
Yes, uh, but it was, Mr. Bartlett stated that, um, Text Dot was whatever considered in our meeting. That's the way Text Dot can go.
Yeah, I think that's understood.
Whatever way it gets there. I mean, we don't want to all of a sudden do it without seeing multiple.
Okay, those in favor, sign off saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move to six C. Consider award a bid to Drury Construction in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the construction of the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop along the Lan- Lanana Creek Trail and Trailhead for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Trails Grant. Community Services Director, hello, Mr. Bray.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. Um, as the mayor just stated, this contract is with Drury Construction, local company. Um, and if you ultimately decide to award this contract tonight, we will be able to accomplish two projects, or rather, close out two projects. The first one is a Texas Parks and Wildlife Trails Grant that we received in two thousand and nineteen that called for construction of a trailhead, which on that map, I know it's real tiny, but I apologize. Uh, but the, the trailhead is at the bottom of that map there, and then to construct an improved trail from there south down to Austin Street. So the trail itself was constructed starting in the spring of two thousand and twenty and finished in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one. We then, uh, switched over to looking at the, uh, construction of the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop. Um, City Council in April of two thousand and nineteen, um, accepted a, a grant or a donation from the Friends of Historic Nacogdoches Incorporated, who had applied for a grant through the Bright Foundation, who then turned around and donated those funds to the city to accomplish four things. Um, and that was a paved trail through Festival Park, and that was completed in May of two thousand and nineteen. A concrete pathway underneath Park Street, which was completed in October of two thousand and nineteen. So before that project, you had to actually cross Park Street. Um, and as you were just talking about traffic, and that's not a good thing when pedestrians are crossing a roadway. And so that was a big benefit, where now you can actually walk along the Lan- Lanana Creek and go underneath the roadway there. Various improvements to Father Mar Hill Springs, completed in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. And then the final one, construct improved trail for the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop. Well, as we were building the Texas Parks and Wildlife Trail, um, section, we decided that we wanted to use the same bid specifications to go out to bid, to bid the Schaffner section going north. Um, so in November of two thousand and twenty, we advertised for bids and received none. Um, we called contractors and they just said, we're busy. It's not that we don't want to do it, we just don't have the time and manpower to do it. So we went again, we went again in February of two thousand and twenty-one, received one bid, and that was from Drury Construction. And that came in at forty-five thousand dollars over available funds. So with the help of Sam Kramer, um, who's recently left Engineering Department, but Sam and I sat down and we reworked yet again, um, how do we build this Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop and get it more reasonably priced? Um, we thought we had made lots of improvements. In fact, we, we know we made lots of improvements in talking to Drury Construction. But when we went out to bid again and opened them up in October of two thousand and twenty-two, it was eighty-six thousand dollars over available funds. And that's just with pricing going up and labor going up. There's not, there's not a way, in talking with Drury, for us to rework this further to get it even cheaper. Um, so Mayor, um, if you choose to, uh, award this contract this evening, it will allow for the construction of a trailhead, um, which includes twenty-eight parking spaces and then access to the north and to the south, to the Lanana Creek Trail and the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop, and construction of the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop. Um, but awarding this contract also does then require a, um, budget amendment in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and ten cents. The second budget amendment that is on your agenda tonight is more of housekeeping. Um, it's moving funds from one fund to another fund. So the Texas Parks and Wildlife Trail Grant is not fifty thousand dollars over budget. That's more of an accounting, um, issue. So Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Brandy Cartwright, um, I'm here with the Parks Advocacy League, and of course, we, uh, support this project. Um, we're very excited to see, uh, parking spaces for, uh, that part of the, the, um, trail. Um, it's definitely needed, and, um, so that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Collier, you're awful quiet. Don't you have something to say about this? Called you out from the back of the room.
Yeah, Clayton Collier, I'm, I'm just here as a volunteer, uh, with the Trail Committee. And, uh, yeah, we put a lot of effort over the past few years of, uh, setting this up, uh, getting some funding from Texas Parks and Wildlife, working with the city and, uh, the Bright Foundation to acquire those funds. And then we ran into the roadblocks that, uh, Brian described on funding going up. It's kind of right in the middle of COVID. And so, yeah, we've got a great project started and, uh, a designated trail, the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop that is an offshoot of the Lanana Creek Trail. And, uh, yeah, definitely need some, uh, parking spaces to access it. Right now, you're having to access from Austin Street and then walk, uh, you know, pretty good. Actually, we've added mile and a half, one direction of Lanana Creek Trail. And then maybe the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop, if, uh, it's probably another half a mile or so, uh, maybe point-six miles. And, um, so, yeah, this is, um, I was waiting for some opposition, but if you want me to brag about it and say why we need it, I mean, it's just, um, we've, we've had a lot of momentum over the past few years with our trail system and, and adding, uh, Benita Creek Trail and parts of the Lanana Creek Trail. So this will just kind of pick back up some momentum that was, uh, halted when, um, we're slowed down during COVID. And so hopefully, we're past that. And if we can get these funds, then that will allow us to, uh, a huge recreation boost up there in the north part of town.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for calling me out.
You bet. Okay, Council, any comments? Uh, Ms. Tucker? No? Ms. Fisher?
Just one question. Um, where are those eighty-six thousand dollars gonna come from?
So, a- anytime that you do a budget amendment mid-year, those are coming directly from reserves. So that is an eighty-six thousand and a fifty thousand dollar use of reserves.
Thank you.
Talk about the fifty thousand a little bit more.
So the fifty thousand, um, originally, that, the grant was two hundred, two-hundred-and-one thousand, I think, total. The city's match was twenty percent, and of that, um, twenty-five thousand dollars was cash, and the other part was going to be, yeah, we were gonna do in-kind labor. And we're not able to do that in, in-house. And so now, we have to transfer the money. So it's basically an, an additional, um, city match. And then, of course, the, the bids came in at a higher amount. So that forty-five thousand, I think, was the original twenty percent. Instead of it being twenty-five thousand and then in-kind, it's the whole forty-five thousand is going to be a cash match now. So that is transferring from the general fund into the special grant fund where that grant is, is. Um, so that is a use of total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of general fund reserves to do both projects, to finish both projects.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Ms. Baldwin?
Oh, I'm good.
Councilmember?
Um, I just want to make sure that we spell her name correctly throughout. Um, it's F- Frances C E S. So, um, I think it's, it's correct on the trail, and I don't mean to, I just, um, I just want to be very, very careful.
Yes, ma'am, that, that is a typo on the PowerPoint only.
Okay, that's all right. Good, good.
It's correct on the map.
Yes.
So.
And, uh, Mayor, thank you for calling out Mr. Collier. I didn't realize he was in the back of the room. He slipped in.
He's got that cap.
As a, as a side note, um, without the assistance of Mr. Collier, we would not be anywhere near where we are today. So thank you for calling him up to the front.
I will make a motion to award the bid to Drury Construction in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the construction of the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop along the Lanana Creek Trail and Trailhead.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to six D. Consider budget amendment for eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and ten cents for the construction of the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop along the Lan- Lanana Creek Trail. Community Services Director, Mr. Bray, I think you've already addressed that. Anything?
Um, no, Mayor, I, I don't have any additional comments for either this one or the next one.
Let me check public comment. Anybody have anything to say about that? Okay, Council, any comments? Do I have a motion?
Can, I was just gonna say.
I'm proposing to.
I was just gonna say, can we address both of these budget amendments with one action?
If we're offered a motion, that, let me, let me read E. Uh, E, consider budget amendment fifty thousand dollars for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Trails Grant Project. Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, E.
Do that to be separate, okay?
That's what he's, um, I make the motion to approve item D, as written.
Second.
So I have a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, now E. Do I have a motion on E?
Make a motion, we approve item E.
Okay.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bray. Uh, six F, have a discussion and seek direction regarding the possibility of adding city holidays, Director of Human Resources. How are you tonight?
Fine, thank you. Benita Hall, Director of Human Resources. Um, it is one of our charges to monitor surrounding employers in an effort to become and maintain competitive and competitiveness, and to offer comparative benefits and services for our employees. We've been asked to see if it were possible to increase the number of holidays that the city celebrates each year. So earlier in November, we researched, um, the neighboring, some of the neighboring, um, employers in order to see what benefits they currently recognize. Um, attached to, attached in the packet, you see what, what we have, um, identified. And, uh, as, um, the city of, uh, Nacogdoches has ten, we are definitely, um, lower. Uh, the county has fourteen, the city of Lufkin has twelve, uh, Angelina County has fourteen, Longview has eleven, and Marshall has twelve. And so we're asking, um, for, um, to hear your thoughts with regard to adding additional holidays.
Okay. Any, uh, public comment on this item? Okay. Council, any comments? I think it's interesting that banks don't have the most on this list. We've actually got probably one of the few.
It always seems like they're closed, right?
That's what people say, it's not true.
Yeah, but you, you're counting federal holidays, all right?
Yeah, but they're all here, I think, aren't they?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Um, what, what holiday, what would you suggest? Maybe Veterans Day for sure, and?
Well, um, one of the ones that, that, um, seems to be prominent among the Veterans Day, another one, um, that is gaining momentum is also Juneteenth. And then it looks like President's Day was identified by at least three of the recipients, three of the surveyors.
Council, any comments?
I am so curious, what is birthday September eleventh at Lufkin? Do you, just out of curiosity, whose birthday?
Well, some cities, uh, will allow the employee to take their birth.
Their birthday.
Correct.
Thank you. I was really curious.
Okay, do I?
Now, there are several options. You can go with, um, um, two dedicated holidays where the offices are closed. Or you can do a combination of, um, a holiday where the offices are closed, and then maybe a personal holiday, um, in order to allow the employees who may not recognize some of these holidays to take one that more suits, better suits there.
But we could leave that up to you or to the, to staff, I guess, and us just approve the two extras, is that?
Or we can do two, uh, personal holidays, and then they can be taken throughout the year.
So that's sort of what Lufkin does on that Labor Day or their birthday, I think, right? They either take September eleventh.
Well, um, there was a, there was, it can be recognized, but, um, September eleventh became a holiday in Texas. Uh, you know, nine-eleven, uh, had to be recognized, and so a lot of organizations doubled up. Um, so some have done, used it for Veterans Day, some have taken Memorial Day as nine-ele- and dedicated as nine-eleven day.
So I'm, I'm curious about your, um, of adding two or three or whatever and letting them choose.
Three's good.
And letting them choose, is that, is that a complicated thing to track if we let people choose?
No, it would be, um, one of those, um, just like any other holiday, it would go through the year. They would have a year to, to take as a personal holiday. There would be a code in the payroll system. And, uh, it would, it would go away at the end of the year.
Just like a vacation day?
Correct. If they didn't, you, well, vacations carry over.
Right.
This would be like a holiday, like a designated holiday. It, it would not, if you, um, chose not to use that day, it would just go away for the next year. It would not carry over.
And, and you would manage the staffing and making sure we have covered it.
Correct.
I'm certainly in favor of the, the Veterans Day, because there's a lot of events across the city on Veterans Day that some of the, uh, city employees are not able to attend. But I'm also in favor of Juneteenth Day also.
One of the, one of the questions that I have, I'm sorry if you weren't finished, Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, of any of the cities you surveyed, did anyone include Election Day?
No, sir.
Like that would be a, one to at least consider.
I think by law, uh, employers are required to give staff time to vote.
They do have the time, doesn't it?
And, and plus, they added, uh, additional time on the front end and the back end of time during the daytime. It's like.
Oh, you mean the election, the polls?
Yes. Yeah.
So that they open at seven and close at seven?
Uh, yeah, and I know during my career, that was one of the things that. It, the company was adamant about employees voting, and they did not question when you said you took four hours off to go vote.
Ma- Mayor, if I may, you know, as part of, you know, however you all decide, really, at the end of the day, we're just requesting some additional days for our employees. Uh, it, it, for example, Veterans Day, as Mr. Baldwin mentioned, uh, there's a lot of activities. Uh, several entities here in Nacogdoches were closed on Veterans Day, so it was, it was, it's quite quiet here in, for the city. Uh, there's no mail, there's no banks, uh, um, certainly the county was closed, a lot of those entities were closed. And so, uh, you know, really, we're just asking for, too, if you're willing to allow us to make that call, we'll be happy to. Um, but we were looking at a, kind of a combination of one that's not as disruptive. In other words, allow the employee to kind of pick and choose how he or she would like to use that day. And then if we were to close, stay on Veterans Day that way, city's closed. Uh, we still obviously are maintaining operations at Police and Fire, and as emergencies come up, we will certainly handle those. But, but really, it's just a accommodate, kind of a combination of both, what we're looking for.
Is that the staff recommendation? The one set one and one personal one?
We would be fine with that, yes, ma'am.
Do you have a recommendation?
Sure. A closed one and a, and a, and a floater, per se. Yes, ma'am.
Baldwin, would you say something else?
I, I, I agree with what, uh, uh, City Manager just stated. Uh, mainly because, uh, Veterans Day is gonna be celebrated on Veterans Day every year on that day. Juneteenth is celebrated, if it's falls on a Thursday, it's gonna be celebrated that Saturday. So let's have the employee have the option as to whether he want to take off that day, that Thursday or not.
Sounds like a motion to me.
Yeah, make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move to six, uh, G. Receive an update on the NAC Together Master Planning Project and Timeline? Hello again.
All right. Hello, Mayor. Uh, Elena Helton, Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services. Uh, Jessica Sowell, Assistant Director of Community Services. We're gonna be tag teaming this presentation, so we'll be going a little back and forth. But we are excited to bring you this update on the city's, uh, current, um, comprehensive planning process and our downtown master planning process. And so we're gonna talk about, um, where we're at so far, as far as community engagement, some deliverables, and then next steps. And then we'll open it up for public comment and questions from, from the Council. So. All right, so this first slide includes the overall project team. It includes DTJ, they're the primary consultant, and then a couple of sub consultants, including Sibit Brand, a KSA catalyst, and then a few more. And one of the things we wanted to highlight was a, uh, project. And one of the things we wanted to highlight was a project team change. France Waldecoke is no longer with DTJ, so our new project manager is Keith Walzak. He's actually on the call. Keith, if you want to say hello. And you guys will be meeting Keith in person. He'll actually be here next week for some focus group meetings and some committee meetings. And then he'll be here for a joint workshop with Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council in January to talk about housing. But Keith comes to us with over thirty years of experience in private and public planning, and again, we're very excited to have him as part of our team. Just through the discussions and initial meetings that we've had so far, he's very engaged, and we don't feel like we're going to miss a beat as far as the momentum that we've gained so far. So just wanted to make that brief introduction, and then Keith is going to stay on the call to answer any questions you guys might have, but wanted to make that brief introduction first. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, and she's going to talk about some of the engagement that we've done so far, and then we'll go back and forth.
Mayor, council, we're excited to talk about some of the engagement we've done as part of our NAC Together process. I know early on in this project, engagement was talked about on and on because this plan is only as good as the information we get from the public. So I'm going to briefly go over kind of what we've done so far, and then Elena's going to go over what we're kind of doing next. So our engagement is broken down into four phases. Phase one was really just kind of laying a foundation for what NAC Together is, what our downtown master plan is, and what our comprehensive plan is. So we did a community driving tour with our consultants, subconsultants, and city staff. We drove them down North Street during the noon lunch hour to talk about traffic. We drove through neighborhoods, we went through downtown, and looked at all different city sites and kind of gave them a good feel for what Nacogdoches looks like. Then we developed a project brand. We did that in coordination with Civic Brand in our committees. So we didn't have to say downtown master plan and comprehensive master planning process with I-69 corridor study and housing needs assessment. So we came up with NAC Together. We came up with the logo, with the color scheme and the wording, all of it with our committees. So that way, it's an easy brand that we can tell people about the project without having to say that mouthful over and over. And then we launched our English and Spanish project website, so that way we had a landing page. When we talked about NAC Together, we could send people there, and all of the information was on our website. So we started with that. Then our phase two, also I forgot to mention on here, anything highlighted green is either something that is finished or is currently in progress on our engagement plan. So we did, we launched our initial meeting in a box. That was designed as kind of an at-home, do-it-yourself focus group. So either people that didn't come to our other focus groups, people that weren't comfortable engaging with our consultant, didn't want city staff around when they said, you know, we need to change a lot of things, they could do a focus group at their own home, with their own community, with their, you know, books, or with their book club, Bible study, friends, whatever they wanted to do. So we launched those meetings in boxes. We've done ten initial interviews that were done by our consultant team. We've started some focus groups. You can see over on the side the ones listed that we've already completed. We did our neighborhoods, our nonprofit government partners, economics, environment, two diversities, and then a transportation focus group. Our next ones next week are housing, and then arts, culture, and recreation, which kind of all lumped together into like a tourism focus group. So we're working on that. We also did two multi-day engagement events, public events. And wrapped into those wasn't just a big public meeting, we also did walking tours with stakeholders, we did design charrettes, we did visioning and feedback meetings, and then big public meetings as well. So they were very packed, several day events. And then we also had virtual rooms with those, so if you couldn't come to the public meeting but still wanted to engage, you could go on the website, drop a pin on an area that you wanted better streetlights, or more beautification, or there's traffic issues, or we need different housing in different areas. So we had those virtual rooms open as well. And then I'll let Elena talk about this portion of it.
All right, thank you, Jessica. So equitable, equitable engagement means that we're taking extra effort to reach those communities that are traditionally hard to reach. And so as part of this engagement effort, Civic Brand has been monitoring the demographics of the responses that we've been getting, including age demographics, race, where people live, whether or not they live or work in Nacogdoches. So as we've been going through this progress, and we see that we're, that we're missing something, we're missing a group based on our current demographics, we've taken extra effort to engage those. And in some cases, actually extended timelines for our surveys to make sure that we have a representative sample based on our, our community demographics. So that's what that equitable engagement means. We also included four half-days of man-on-the-street activities, including, we had people out at the SFA football game, talking to students about the community visioning process, and what they wanted to see for the future of Nacogdoches. We also attended the, the, some of the downtown events, including the Art Festival and the Dia de los Muertos Festival. We also had people out at the Trades Days and a couple of other community events that were already anticipated, and we just kind of piggybacked off of those because we knew people were going to be there. We wanted to meet them where they were. We also went to the Senior Living Expo that was about a month or two ago out at the Expo Center, and we actually got a pretty good response from that. If you look on the side, like Jessica was talking about the focus groups, these are the survey topics that we've completed so far. So we've done the community visioning survey, a downtown survey, and a transportation survey. And we've got two more coming up. We've got the housing and economics, so those will be coming soon. We're also going to be doing some online surveys to get feedback on the drafts of the plan. So as we're coming forward with draft recommendations for the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan, we'll actually be posting those online and getting feedback from those drafts to close that feedback loop, to make sure, you know, did we hear what you said? Are we totally off, off, you know, off the rails as far as these recommendations? So the same people that responded to the surveys will also be providing feedback to those different draft elements. All right, and now Jessica's going to be talking a little bit about some of those specific engagement activities that we've been doing.
And these are the really fun things that we got to do. And so our, our outreach kind of got, we, I broke it down into kind of marketing, events and activities in our meetings, because there's a lot that goes into trying to get feedback from the public. So of course, the marketing, we talked about a little bit as far as the website. We do email newsletters. We try not to hound people. So we send out newsletters, and we have things like a new survey, or an event coming up, or somewhere we want them to meet us at, whether we're going to be at an event, or something's already happening. We've printed countless flyers, posters, rat cards. My poor staff has cut out a million little cards that have QR codes on them, and we hand them out everywhere. We've done social media posts, and we also do giveaways at events. We've done things like stickers, dress balls, t-shirts, notepads, and everyone's super excited about them. They all have the website on them, so we're directing people back to our website. Elena touched a little bit on the meeting, the events and activities. We've done meeting in a boxes, we've done focus groups. Total with the focus groups, we've had a little over a hundred people engaged that way. Individual interviews, the public meetings, we've had about two hundred and forty people that have attended those. The surveys, we've had one thousand three hundred and seventy-five responses to the three surveys, which is right on target with where we wanted to be, so we're pretty excited about that. And also our man-on-the-street events, and then our community events. And on top of all those things, we have meetings once a month with our downtown steering committee and our comprehensive master plan steering committee. Those are held monthly on the second Wednesday and the second Thursday at three-thirty over at the Rec Center. Those are open to the public. Almost every time, we have at least one or two people from the public that come and watch it. We record the meeting, and then they're all put on the NAC Together website as well. So we do those things. And here's a couple fun pictures from what all we do. Excuse me, at the public meeting, you'd see people leaning over maps, drawing. I think we have some cute little kids running around.
She's mine.
That's why I pointed that one out. She is cute as button, though. Blueberry Festival, we were out there sweating, handing out cards, handing out fans, so we were very popular. We do walking tours with stakeholders, feedback meetings full of a lot of high fives and really good energy. Design charrettes, we were looking at a few potential designs for downtown. There you see us at the SFA football game getting feedback, and also at the Dia de los Muertos event, which these ladies were very excited because they were holding up a flyer that we printed that had their picture from the year before. So they were all very excited they were featured on a flyer. So we've been at a lot of these events. We've been very public. We all wear our t-shirts. The t-shirts are fun because they also have a QR code on the side, so we're a walking, talking billboard. You can scan our t-shirts and go directly to our website, so we get a lot of recognition for that. And of course, all that outreach kind of leads us to what we're doing next.
So last month, we sent city council drafts of several reports. They included the existing conditions report for the downtown master plan and the comprehensive plan. And these reports really are essential to the process because they provide the background and baseline data necessary to help understand the city's current conditions and the city's current needs, and then identify those issues that need to be included in the comprehensive plan update. So we've provided drafts for the downtown and the comprehensive plan. We've also provided some drafts of some downtown design sketches that came from those design charrettes that Jessica just talked about, and we also provided the draft engagement report. The engagement report essentially encapsulates everything that we've done so far as far as community engagement. Online surveys, focus groups, interviews, man-on-the-street events. And so as we go along the process, we'll have a complete report that basically captures everything that we've done as part of this, part of this process. Up next, now that we've gone, gotten the majority of that community input, now we're ready to draft those visioning statements, those guiding principles that will inform the policies and recommendations that come out of the comprehensive plan and the master plan, of the downtown master plan. It also includes a draft of the future I-69 corridor study. And then those guiding principles and objectives will inform draft policies that will help us achieve those goals and those big picture of visioning items. And so all that culminates in a draft implementation report that actually combines downtown master plan, comprehensive plan, and the future I-69 objectives and implementation into a comprehensive strategy that helps identify where we can achieve multiple goals with limited resources. So all those working together to achieve the common plan for the city. And so the initial contract timeline put this adoption as March twenty-twenty-three. We feel like we're pretty on schedule with April, May, and so we did get a little bit of a delay because we decided to delay our engagement process in order for the students to come back and engage them. And so because of the city delay of the engagement, that delayed the overall project, but only by thirty to sixty days. So we feel like we're still on track with the project. We're still on track with the timeline for deliverables, and we're excited about what we've done so far. And so with that, we, we know there's some public comment, and we want to open up questions from, from the council as well.
I have one thing for you.
Oh, yeah, sure.
One thing that I forgot to mention on this, we also mentioned these draft policies and the draft chapters, things like that. We do have a few focus groups that haven't been completed, so those will be used as kind of feedback focus groups. So they'll be presented with some of our draft chapters, you know, some of the ideas, the draft vision and guiding principles. And then, like Elena said, kind of close that feedback loop with, you know, here's what we've come up with so far. Did we hear the public write? Are we completely off base? Do we need to tinker with things a little bit? So it's not just a, here's a draft policy, we want city council to approve it, and we're done. We will have our committees looking at it, we'll have our feedback focus groups looking at it, so that way it's not just kind of a one and done. So I wanted to add that before we did public comment.
Well, and one, one more slide. So we included a draft timeline. This is updated because we did delay that initial engagement process. And so we wanted to present this to the council for discussion purposes. This also identifies a joint workshop between the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council that we've scheduled for next month, specifically to talk about housing. And so the DTJ team will be here, and by the time we have that meeting, we'll have feedback from the housing focus group that we'll be having next week with some specific industry, community stakeholders. And so just wanted to make sure that we reminded the council about that future workshop as well.
What's the date on that?
January twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
So unless the council has questions, would you like to open it up for?
Yes, please. Is there any public comment? Anyone want to speak to this item? Okay. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Hockme? Okay.
Yes. You touched on this a little bit, but I want to follow up. What is your, and this question might be for Mr. Walzak too, your sense of community participation in this based on the expectations that we had, based on what's reasonable to expect for a community like ours, which those two might be not the same thing? Yeah, what's your sense of that?
I can try to speak to that, and then I'll, I'll let Keith speak to it as well. So we made an extra effort at the very beginning to make sure that every survey, every focus group, every community engagement activity, we were monitoring and tracking the demographics of those responses, to make sure that we had as close to a representative sample as possible, knowing that there was going to be some extra effort for certain groups. And so right now, we, it looks like we are on track as far as hitting those numbers for our demographics as far as the ratios of our African-American community, Hispanic community, so on and so forth. Right now, our transportation survey is still open. We're still trying to get some more responses from that. But as far as everything else, we, we feel that the numbers show that we're on track for that representative sample. And what we'll be doing when we're moving forward with these draft plans, will we take in those focus groups where we engage those, those specific communities, and actually vetting those drafts through those focus groups as well? So we'll be going back to those people where we got that initial engagement, and making sure that we close that feedback loop and that they also hear those recommendations that we created, or that the consultant created based on that feedback. Keith, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good, okay. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's really great to be here with you tonight. To add to Elena's description, you know, I've had the chance in the last three years to work on multiple town comprehensive plans and community engagement, and it clearly is one of the most important aspects that we can focus on in any comprehensive plan. But in the last decade or so, the notion of equity is really becoming a focus as well. Sometimes we think about, you know, survey results. Did we get a thousand results? Did we get fifteen hundred? Did we meet with X, Y, and Z number of community members and groups? And the numbers are important because they're objective criteria, but what I always tend to believe is making sure that we're reaching a broad, diverse audience, that we're, that we're monitoring cohorts, groups of people and communities within your community, and making sure that we're doing an assertive effort to reach out and make sure we have opportunities for them to engage with us. And so we're, we're actually tracking those metrics with Civic Brand and Elena and Jessica. And, you know, we're, we're really hitting high strides, I think, when it comes to reaching various demographics. And what I mean by that is age groups, male, female, people of different neighborhoods, ethnicities. And when we look at the metrics right now, all of those cohorts are really strong. The, typically, the under eighteen age group tends to be a little difficult to getting engaged in these processes, but with the students coming back, I think we can do that with success. So, but when you look across the board at those metrics, it's really healthy. You are really getting a lot of feedback from a lot of different people. So overall, I would say the engagement process has been really, really great. And I'm, I'm speaking as a very objective person because I wasn't involved in that. I'm just kind of looking at the numbers now. So I'm really impressed, and I think we can continue to, to do good things and get a lot of good input from people.
That's really good to hear that that's your impression, and I absolutely agree with what you said about equity. I can't remember which one of you it was that said that you guys have been putting in extra effort for groups that have not been as responsive. What have, have those extra efforts looked like?
So one really great thing through this process is that DTJ and Civic Brand have kind of checked in with us, saying, you know, hey, under eighteen, excuse me, haven't heard from a lot of them. We need to kind of look at those groups. We've got our committees involved with, you know, how do we reach, you know, different demographics, ethnicities, age groups. So some of those things, like under eighteen, we were definitely lacking. And so we went to the NISD Hispanic Heritage Night, which helped us as well get some of the Hispanic population, also a lot of the school-age kids. We had a walking tour with the Lot Crew, which is Leaders of Tomorrow through the Chamber of Commerce. And so normally, we just do a walking tour with them, but since we had a captive group of eighth graders, we did a small meeting in a box with them. And so it's things like that where it's, we need under eighteen, so what opportunities do we already kind of have that city staff's already participating in, and then going out and getting them? It's also things, you know, if we realize that some of our Hispanic leadership hasn't been involved, we've reached out to some committee members, saying, hey, you deal with a lot of Hispanic business owners, can you talk to them, take flyers, talk about the survey, and we do see our numbers jump almost every time we do that. So it's been pretty impressive, especially early on in the community visioning survey, when we kind of went to our committees, saying, here's who we need, we haven't heard from these people, we closed the gap very, very quickly. So I was very proud of our committees for doing that. And then things like we went to the senior expo and kind of got a good age gap that we were missing there as well.
That's helpful, thank you. My other question, I can't remember exactly when it was, but during, I think, both the Comp Plan Committee and the Downtown Master Plan Committee had a meeting where we had to do the post-it things of giving people's name and contact info for particular topics. What have happened with those names?
Those names are the ones we use to start our focus group invitations. Some of those, some of the contacts are outdated, or some people we kind of moved around to different categories, so we didn't have the same person coming to every single focus group. So we use that as the basis as our focus group invitations, and then city staff filled in some gaps we had. And then some of those people, you know, couldn't come to one focus group, so they recommended somebody else from their same circle to kind of take their spot. So that's what we use those for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank, thank you, Ms. Fisher, for bringing up the issue of communications. Is there any specific ways that you can determine if the diverse community has participated in surveys and et cetera so far?
Yes, so as part of these surveys, at the very end, the respondent is. Yes, so as part of these surveys, at the very end, the respondent is asked to respond to a number of demographic questions, including their age, ethnicity, whether they live or work here, and also identify where they live on a map. So trying to identify, are we hearing from people primarily from the northeast ward or the southwest? We have a good idea of not only kind of the makeup of those people, but where they live within the community.
Now, is there adequate response from, say, the diverse community and maybe low-income communities?
Yes, but we have had to take some extra effort in order to get those responses. So we actually reached out to pastors in the southeast and southwest ward, and they helped us share those with their congregation in those neighborhoods. So that really bumped our numbers for some of the areas as far as like regionally, where we were seeing some gaps. But through those efforts, we've identified a really strong response.
Oh, after you met with ministers, ministerial allowance? Okay.
And I'll also mention, we did have several focus groups that targeted our African-American and Hispanic leadership. And then a lot of the people that attended those said, hey, we have some more people that you should be talking to. And then they sent us email addresses, phone numbers, and so we've added those people into our contact list, and we're going to be inviting them to future focus groups, interviews, and making sure they're getting our emails and taking surveys and things like that. So we're playing a giant game of telephone sometimes, but it seems to be working, which is good.
And, you know, social media sites, normally, you know, groups like All My Friends, et cetera. Majority of them is really not aware of, I'm going to say, surveys or a comprehensive plan or a downtown plan. So that bothers me that I can go on the media site and ask about, is everyone taking the survey, et cetera? And then of course, there's what survey, you know?
And I think that's a problem we're going to run into with everything. And so we've tried to kind of throw everything against the wall and see what sticks. Even with some of our committee members said, you know, some people in my church or the groups I run around with, you know, they're not on social media. So I've told them, you know, I have a picture in the link, can you text it to your friends? Because even some people do that, or will you call them, like, will you put it in your church bulletin? So we've got some good response off those things. But I do think if we rely too much on social media, we miss a lot of people. We have, I know at several events, some people said, I'm not going to take it online. And so we printed out some of the surveys. Printed out the surveys, people wrote in the answers, and then our poor part-time staff had to go transcribe all of that and submit it, but it still works. And that worked for several groups. But especially if there's some people that you think aren't getting this information, and y'all have ideas on how we can reach them and things you'd like to see us do, we are happy to do that as well.
I'm going to get a lot of feedback from my next statement. I'm not sure that going to the ministerial, was that the ministerial allowance or just ministerial as a whole?
It was a few members of that group, and so.
Ministerial allowance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just really not sure that it's been presented to the members, church members, as it should be because they are not, the ministers themselves are not aware of the comprehensive downtown plan. I think it would be better if, you know, someone with the knowledge and how to present it to the members because to get up and say, have you taken the survey? They have no idea.
We specifically reached out to Reverend Don Mills, who served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for several years. And so he really did a good job of kind of communicating that message to his congregation in a way that meant something to that group. Also Reverend Don Lacy helped us out. And so we talked to those people ahead of time to help figure out, okay, how do we communicate this in a way where it matters to the people in your community? And so we did try to be strategic in the people that we did reach out to specifically to make sure that they were able to communicate that in a way that was easy to understand.
And at the same time, if it's something with a church or congregation or any group that would like someone, either me and Elena or our committee members to go and talk to that group about, here's what NACT Together is, take our surveys and stuff like that, we're happy to do that as well.
Thank you. And, you know, that allowance is 32 churches. There may be two or three that got the message, the other 29 did not. I suppose I have a meeting in two weeks with the ministerial alliance. And I will, maybe I may call one of you.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to attend and help out with that.
Thank you.
I have a lot of questions.
You're not going to get a bathroom break?
I still have a lot of questions.
Actually, just going to say, if we could take a quick recess.
Right now?
As soon as you're, whenever you're ready.
Well, let's take the recess now, because I do have a number of questions to ask, so.
Okay, we'll take a few minutes, 10-minute recess. Okay, we'll resume if you. Okay, Councilmember. Mr. Ballinger, go ahead.
Okay. So my first question is, how are we on the budget and on the expenditures? Are we over budget at this point? Do we expect to be over budget? Do we expect any impact from the change in the leadership at DTJA or what?
No, we are right on budget.
Right on budget, okay. All right, thank you, that helps. And then I have a variety of questions. Let me start with, do we have, first of all, the existing conditions report? Has that public or was that just given to us? And can we get feedback from, you know, from the community on it?
Sorry, it was provided to City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and both of the committees. So the Downtown Committee and the Comprehensive Plan Committee. After this meeting, we can post that online for draft feedback. Essentially, it's a technical report, just looking at, you know, factual information on the city population demographics, built environment, things of that sort. So no, to answer your question, we haven't posted it publicly for public comment, but we have given it to the committees and the PNC and City Council.
So unless you receive comments back, do you consider it, yes, this is good or perfect? Or, I mean, is there a mechanism to actually look at the pieces and make sure this is, that people agree that this is correct data? Or, because I think I did get some feedback that there are a number of errors, and there's a number of questions people had and assumptions and.
Yeah, so those are reviewed by staff, and we'll get the ideas to get final review from the committees before that's a final report that gets incorporated into the plan.
So when will the committees be looking at the existing conditions? And are they going to be giving their feedback at that particular committee meeting?
So the existing conditions reports, they've already been presented to the committees. And then we presented, then we gave them the full document. So initially, we gave them kind of the high-level takeaways from those existing condition reports. But both committees have received the full reports in their entirety. And then we're meeting next week, and we'll ask the committees if they have any corrections, feedback, anything that they think could be clarified on that report. So we'll be doing that next week.
Okay, so will that be the whole topic of next week's meeting?
No, ma'am. So DTJ and the consultant team will be here, and we'll be introducing those initial guiding principles and themes of the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan. So that'll be part of the discussion as well.
So are you going to give them those guiding principles and themes ahead of time to think about before they come? It seems like there hasn't been much to do at these meetings except listen. And now this meeting seems to be heavy duty on giving a whole lot of feedback. Will they understand this? And I say they because this is, a meeting is being held when we city council people can't be there.
Yeah, what do you mean you can't be there? I'm sorry.
We're, this is while we're interviewing people who will serve on the committee, on the, not bond committee, but the other.
There's, okay. So we sent the committees an email a couple of weeks ago, letting them know, hey, we're going to have our regular meeting. We've been having those regular meetings for a while now. I didn't realize there was a scheduling conflict with the interviews for this other committee.
I just assumed you all did because you're all scheduling, you know. But, so all of us are involved in the, no council person will be at those meetings, I don't think. I know the full committee, I'm not sure, when does downtown meet? What day is that?
Downtown will meet on Wednesday, and the Comprehensive Plan Committee will meet on Thursday, and they each have 19 members.
Yeah, you've got us all, we're all involved in the interviews.
Do we need to look to move those interview meetings?
Well, I don't know that we can at this point.
Have you set them up?
We started, we only have two or three scheduled so far.
I think we probably try to move them.
The issue, mayor, was not their schedule, but yours.
We only had certain days, we were heading into Christmas.
So how long are those meetings going to be?
Sorry, they're scheduled from 3:30 to 5:00.
So we probably could not take an hour and a half out of each of those days?
Maybe we can have another time to provide feedback or to give questions. It seems like there's a lot to cover if you're going to get the feedback from the committee. If they get these reports ahead of time, and they, you know, the data that was given was just shown on a projector, and the print was really, really little, I personally could not see. And we didn't have the hard copies of it. And so this will be the first time that they've actually seen the draft existing conditions report. And then you're asking them at the same time immediately to give feedback on the values and vision. And we haven't seen those at all yet. To me, that's a big task, if you want real.
Yeah, sure.
And just one point of clarification, for the downtown master plan, they were given the full PDF report of the existing conditions in, I believe it's September, August or September, I can check at our meeting. So they were given it beforehand, they reviewed it, and then were asked to email questions, concerns, edits to it. And I got a few responses here and there, but overall, not a lot of comments. So the downtown plan has seen this. And our plan is to give some of those drafts as far as the guiding principles to our committees beforehand. I don't know if it'll be two days or a week, but our goal is to get it to y'all beforehand. So you do have a chance to at least review it, and then have DTJ present it, kind of tell you how we got there, what we used to put this information together, and how we got these guiding principles. So that way, it's not just y'all reading these reports, but also reading them, having a discussion about it, and giving feedback as well. I just wanted to add that about the downtown plans, since they have looked at theirs.
And we also emailed that presentation to the entire Comp Plan Committee as a whole. Essentially, those slides were the key takeaways from the existing conditions report, because it's a 100-page report. And so the Comp Plan Committee has had that for several months now. And so next week, when we're meeting, we're not asking for the final input. We're going to be introducing these topics and themes, we're going to be having a discussion. It's not going to be the end-all, be-all of feedback. So we'll be having multiple discussions, not only with the committee, but we'll be taking back those guiding principles to the different focus groups that we've met with, we're putting them online. So next week is really like an introduction and to really get some initial feedback from the committee, not, it won't be the final meeting, if that makes sense.
Well, I'm looking at the project timeline, and it looks like the values and vision is finishing in December. So it looks like, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that we will be looking at community values, which we really haven't discussed, the plan framework, which I still have questions, the plan elements and the goals. So those will all be set?
No, so they're working on drafting those as we speak, and then we're going to be presenting those. Keith, do you want to speak a little bit to that, answer Kathleen's question?
Yeah, no, it's all a great conversation, it's a great set of questions. I think in a nutshell, it looks like when you look at this schedule, and you look at values, visions, draft policies, implementing, it's a lot of information. And I hear what you're saying, that, you know, there's got to be enough time for people to digest it, to ask questions. But none of those bars, none of those colored bars are a firm ending point. We're just taking little snippets of talking about values and vision and the planned framework and bringing that to the community members to talk about it so that everybody understands how we're organizing the plan. What are the major plan elements? How does the plan process work? And then we go into draft policies. But each one of these things are sort of operating concurrently, but they don't stop. They continue to evolve. They'll continue to evolve all those pieces right up till the end of March, when we then deliver a preliminary draft plan to Elena and Jessica and you all for consideration, and then goes into a plan adoption process. So while the graphic looks like there's a start date and an end date to those things, it's really not intended to be that way at all. We're presenting pieces, digestible pieces, so people can understand the planning process and what is a set of values? What is a vision statement? What are policies? How are they formulated? How did we bring that information to the community for consideration? And then from that moment on, it's a continuous input process. So it doesn't really stop until that plan is adopted. I hope that makes a little sense.
Yes, that's very helpful. But are we actually going to be, or are they, since we won't, be drafting the goals that we intend to accomplish and pretty much before the end of December, yeah, which is only next week?
Yep, so next week, we're bringing plan elements. So your comprehensive plan is going to have 10 or 12 plan elements. A plan element is transportation and mobility, land use, historic preservation. All of those components are plan elements. We're bringing those, that structure of those plan elements to the committees next week. We're bringing draft goal statements for each of those plan elements and explaining to everybody how we've developed those goal statements. And it's important because it's not something that we're making up. We're pulling that from the engagement process, we're pulling it from the technical assessments that we've been developing with our subconsultant teams. We're developing those goal statements with Jessica and Elena and other staff members. And we're bringing them forward next week as a very preliminary draft, all open for discussion. So that is a lot of information, and we can only chew off so much next week. But we also want to start to get into the conversation about policy. So each one of those plan elements that I mentioned will have a series of policy statements. We're looking at your 2003 plan as a baseline, because there's a lot of great things about your 2003 comprehensive plan. We're weighing those policy statements from the 2003 plan with what we're hearing from the community members today as a part of this plan update. And so we're, as your hired consultant, we're using best practices and our experience and taking all that information and trying to formulate it into a logical, understandable set of pieces of information for people to start to understand and digest, ask questions. But none of it is, it's never static, and it's not complete until the plan is adopted. So it is an important part of the planning phase, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, I guess that's a, we'll just fasten our seat belts and see where it goes. Another question I have is, I would really like to see the data from these surveys prior to considering any of these, what the values are, you know, what the, not the elements, because I think those are, but what goals we then come up with in the draft policies. I'd like to see the data from the surveys, like how many filled them out, what were the rankings? Just, you know, not an interpretation of the data. Because right now, we're getting interpretations of, you feel good about who's reached? Well, I want to know who's been reached and who hasn't been reached. So instead of how we feel about it, I'd like to see, you know, and I'd love to see the responses. I mean, are they being, have they been collated and put together? I don't want to add a ton of work, but I'd just like us to get the same information that you all are working from.
Yes, so Civic Brand is monitoring and maintaining that data, they do send us updates. So we have a good idea of the number of total responses, broken down by demographics. So yes, we do have that data.
But I'm talking about the results. You know, this is a study we have done, so what are the findings?
Yes, we have that data as well. What are you asking specifically? I'm just trying to figure out what you're.
As far as like responses to individual questions?
Yeah, the whole thing. I mean, I'm used to getting the, you know, this is what we found from this survey. One of the difficulties I had, as you know, I went way out of my way to try and get responses from specific communities in hard copies because they wanted it in hard copies, but they had difficulties, you know, completing, for example, a 22-item ranking. That's a very hard thing to do. The Spanish-speaking community really had some difficulty with that. So I'd kind of like to see, well, which questions did they answer? What did they not answer? How did people rank them? What are we working from? So, I mean, not just me, other people have said, we've done a lot of surveys, what have they resulted in?
Elena, could I weigh in a little?
Elena, could I weigh in a little bit here?
Yes.
There's typically three stages of data, um, processing. One, it's get that survey out there and as Elena just pointed out, collate the results in its raw form. So we're not manipulating the data, we're just simply collating it based on demographics, as Elena pointed out. And that data, whether it's a survey result or a commentary, is, is in its raw form. The second step is we look for patterns and trends. And what that's doing for us is it's leading towards, uh, you know, priorities, community preferences, trade-offs. That's the next step. So that's the analytics of taking the data, the raw data, and starting to understand where, what are these values that are really strong, strongly held? And we can cross tabulate that with different demographic groups or cohorts. So that's a really important, uh, step in the process. And then the third is the interpretation, which is the output. It's the part of the sausage making where we're, you know, releasing some information, which is typically a, a guiding principle, right? In your community, it might be economic vitality as a guiding principle. Uh, there's a goal statement that we craft and people can judge that goal statement and determine if it's accurate or not. And then as we were talking about earlier, you're going to get into more and more detail, draft policies and draft actionable items. And so, um, I hope that, that makes sense. It's really hard, I mean, we do this for a living. But it's hard for, uh, a lot of people to process that. And so we have to take it slowly and we have to be very thorough and very conscientious and talk about it and take the time to talk about it so people understand it.
Well, Mr. Walzak, are we going to have, um, access to the collated data, the cross tabbed analytics, or just the principles that you, uh, that you come up with?
Oh, it's, it's very transparent. You're going to have access to all of the information. We're not holding anything back and it, it's, it's, you're, you're absolutely, the community, you as leaders in the community, elected officials, you, you will have access to all that information, of course.
So, so will we have that, access to that, uh, data and information that actually comes from the data prior to choosing, um, values, visions, draft policies? Uh, and then, and I ask this because a number of people, including myself, are researchers and have done this kind of work before. We have a university here that has, um, many people have, uh, been part of different kinds of research, including qualitative and quantitative and, um, looking at, um, representation and samples and, you know, variety of things, so.
No, I appreciate you mentioning that because I don't know all of your backgrounds. And then it's really great that you're on the council and you have that background, so that's tremendous. Um, I will work with Jessica and Elena to understand, you know, I, I have to ask for forgiveness a little bit here. I've been in the, uh, in the role as the new project manager for a month now. And so I'm coming up to speed, right? So the timing of releasing the information, how it's been released, Elena's starting to help me out to understand that. But, uh, I'll work with Elena and, as, as your consultant to figure out how to best roll that information out.
Okay, I mean, we had, at our very last meeting, we had, uh, several people ask for more specifics and ask for information about, um, what happened to, anyway, for ask, ask for these kinds of things um, in different, uh, ways, um, and in different steps. So they do want to understand what, what exactly the findings are before, um, making, um, making major decisions for our city, um, and not just the interpretation.
Gee, I understand, thank you for that. And, and, you know, major decisions, uh, no one's making any major decisions at this point. It's all draft based on our, and understanding of the data, best practices. And it's just there for, as a recommendation to you all. So no decisions are being made until, you know, you adopt the plan.
Right, well, even the existing conditions report had some recommendations, which was interesting to me.
That is true. Typically, um, I see existing conditions reporting as having key findings. So you have the data, the background information, uh, and key findings. Uh, but our team, and by the way, we have a really great team on this project, these projects. Uh, really great competence in all of them. And, uh, so yes, I think that Catalyst put out there, uh, what they coined as recommendations. And I just read their housing assessment report today. And they did that in that housing assessment report, which I think is fine because they're, they're professionals and they're providing, you know, preliminary recommendations to us, but it's not decided upon.
Right, right, right. So we don't have that housing report? No, we don't have that, okay. Um, and, and, um, my final, like grouping of questions is, um, what is the role of the advisory committees? Because we started out calling them steering committees and these people were selected for, uh, their talents and their expertise. And they have not, um, um, I don't know how to put this. Um, they haven't really, uh, they have felt frustrated, most of them. In fact, we, and at least in our committee, probably half of the people don't come. And, um, because we're not actually helping to steer this, this, even the process of how the surveys or what's in them or whatever. And so there's a lot of anxiety going forward that that committee will actually have a strong hand in interpretation and helping to set values and the vision, to draft the policies. Or do we not see them as having this? We talked a little bit earlier about these focus groups then would give the feedback and make, make corrections and maybe help look at the policies. But, um, are the, are, are this steering now advisory committee going to have a strong hand in that? Help me out here, please.
Um, so the committees have always been called advisory committees, even in the adopting resolution. I think we've used steering and advisory interchangeably, those terms, just because they're common. But they've always been called advisory committees. Um, and the idea is that this group, because of their, because of their roles in the community, they act as a sounding board for different ideas and recommend, and recommendations that come forward, to vet those, to make sure that we're on track, that we actually heard what the community was saying and to make sure that we're not coming way out of left field. They're also meant to act as advocates for the project and help us connect into those hard to reach groups that don't traditionally come to public hearings and public meetings and things like that. Keith, I can let you expand upon that. But the idea is that any, any recommendation that comes of this plan is vetted through those committees first prior to planning and zoning commission and city council. So they're the, they're the first ones to review them, they give feedback. Nothing gets through that committee without consensus. Does that answer your question?
Um, yes, I want to be sure that those committees have that kind of role, that they are reviewing it and they are making recommendations or they're asking for more information or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
They need, okay.
Can I also add to that? Um, and so I think also some of that, we just haven't got to that portion yet. Um, we've relied really heavily on our committees to help us get to communities, to do some of this outreach, just so we had enough information to start making those draft policies, chapters, things like that. And so now they kind of transition into that role of, okay, now we have something to really look at, to review, um, to give recommendations on. Um, so now we're kind of transitioning into that now that we got all of that data and our committees did such a great job getting that information out there, bringing people to the table. Um, and now we have information to actually look at and start reviewing.
Okay, that, um.
I, I would just add briefly that, um, there is a distinct difference between an advisory committee and a steering committee. Steering committees are oftentimes formally, uh, enacted, sometimes selected by mayor and councils. And they are actually steering the process and they're providing a recommendation. Advisory committees are, are not that formalized and they're not necessarily providing a recommendation. They're advising, uh, along the way. And that's a very different, uh, body of, of, of a committee, that, a body of a committee. And so I don't know what has been communicated to the advisory committee, but advisory committees are just that. They're just advising along the way. They're not even necessarily reaching consensus as a group.
Well, just to clarify, Mr. Walzak, this, this part of them, uh, part of their, um, their, um, what's the word for it, their mission, their.
Charge.
Charge was to reach consensus. Uh, they were chosen, uh, deliberately by, um, the council and also by the administration, um, and the mayor. Um, and they believed when they were chosen that they would have, um, a, um, a more, um, deliberate role, a more, uh, a stronger role in this process than simply advising, so.
I see, okay. No, I appreciate you clarifying that because I wasn't, I wasn't made aware of that. But, uh, I think that, that's, that's fine, we will work around those parameters, for sure.
We either need to work around them or clarify where are the decision-making points and who is, is it who's making those decisions? Right now we're kind of in this, you know, uh, that comes later, you know, is, is, so we really need it very, very clear what this process is going to look like.
Yes, we do. I completely a hundred percent agree with that statement. And if you look at the project schedule, I will just say that I'm, I'm going to raise this, this, this is something for us to think about. This February eighth is noted as the next DTAC and CPAC meeting. At that point in time, there's a preliminary recommendation by these committees then to recommend approval for the vision statement, the plan elements, the draft goals and the draft policies. That's achievable in my experience, that's achievable. But we have to prepare them for that request. The problem will be that we then, then don't have really an opportunity for them to approve formally through consensus the implementation strategies, the blue bar there that's, uh, third, fourth down. So we need to think that through, to your point.
Right, and, and also if you will add in your deliberations and your thought process that we have Christmas here and people are not going to meet. So really you have maybe one meeting in January and these are really, this is the future of our city. So, uh, these are important things to consider. And if we're going to make those decisions in a pretty, um, not totally hard, but a, a pretty, um, a deliberate way on February eighth, there's quite a bit of, uh, work and information that they need to get and possibly need to talk among themselves or whatever in order to be prepared to come to those conclusions on February eighth. And, and then in order to do implementations, you know, work on implementation strategies. Am I right? Am I off base on this or?
I, I, I would say your intuition is correct.
All right, well, we, we hope you will, um, the earlier we can get any information about the findings that you have, the better off we all will be. And, um, I don't know what to do with the, the existing condition questions. I think they're worth a, a discussion. I had several, um, um, but I don't want to take the whole council's time right now.
Could you, could you discuss that maybe with Elena or give her that, give her that feedback? At a, at a later time by email or something?
Well, I think, uh, there, a, a group needs to, I, I think it's, it needs to be more, you know, maybe in the, I may give them to like other committee members who will, who will be there since we can't on the next week.
And they've all received a copy.
Right.
Her, her feedback is what you were talking about.
Oh, your feedback, oh, yes.
Not my feedback, but the feedback. I'll let them present it and, and I'll ask, I may ask members of the community who, um, who ended up seeing one from another committee member, they had feedback. And so I'm, I'm, well, I guess we'll give it next, next week. It's a pretty hefty week, pretty hefty meeting.
Yes, um, and I'll, I'll coordinate with Jan afterwards to talk about that schedule, see if there's anything that we can do to accommodate, uh, more council members coming to those meetings. But, um, again, the committee is made up of nineteen members. Um, and so we do anticipate pretty good turnout and all of those, all that information will also be shared with the city council. So there will be several opportunities to provide feedback on, on those documents or reports.
So I have one tiny little thing left.
Okay.
Um, I didn't, uh, take this from the consent agenda that we replaced a member. But, um, um, we also, one of my nominees from the downtown committee has resigned from the committee. And I did want to replace them, but I wanted to make sure that the committees would really be working. And if they are, um, um, I'd like to, if that's all right with y'all, uh, nominate somebody to replace one of the downtown committee.
At a future meeting?
Uh, yeah, I guess it will have to do.
Right now.
Okay, and then maybe, um, they can start coming or whatever, but, all right.
Okay, anybody, anything else?
I, just after hearing this discussion, I, I really wanted to listen to what my fellow council members said. Um, I will admit that I, I gave some feedback to Mr. Canizares, uh, at, as to my frustration that we have not had any report. And I'm, the information that y'all shared with us is fantastic. I'm glad that we got that information now and had some time to digest it. That is, has been very helpful. Uh, my frustration was that we didn't have any discussion at the council level between June and today. And as we get closer to the end of this plan adoption, I think we just need to have more regular discussion about it with this group. Just to make sure that we're staying on track and that we're all aware of what's going on. I'll, uh, I'll echo Councilmember Bellinger's comments about the, the raw data, the, the collated data. I too would like to see what those responses look like, making sure that we do have that equity just, just to see who is responding and that sort of, not specific individuals, but what those demographics look like. This is, this is a very important process that we're going through and we, we need to get it right.
And, and I'd like to follow up on that. It's not just, um, we actually have information living here that you may not have. It's DTJ and, and actually the staff may not understand, um, because this is not what you normally do e- every day. But for example, I, uh, for example, there are questions about the Esri data that is collected from urban environments and now interpolated and, and used in this very rural, uh, setting, which may or may not be valid. Um, you know, that's just one small, uh, question. But there are others, we are, there are talented people, um, and very knowledgeable people who could help in this and could catch, wait a minute, and then this interpretation may not be the best interpretation under, under these circumstances and in a rural community and particularly a community that cares very much about its history and, um, uh, so anyway, that's part of the reason to bring data back.
Okay, anybody else?
One last little comment about.
Eight o'clock.
I know we've, uh, we can have another recess if we need it.
We got another.
Just the, um, the discussion between advisory and steering. I know that the, the resolutions specifically said advisory and we use those terms interchangeably. But from the time that was adopted until I think June, almost every document for those meetings said steering. And so I, it wasn't until I had my one-on-one with the consultants, that interview, that I was fully made aware that was, that it was advisory and not steering. So I think, I don't know if the committees have been told that, but if they haven't, let's make sure we're all clear on what our roles are in this process and, and go with that. If there's not to be consensus, if it's just an advisory role overviewing those things, let's go with it. But if it's a more defined process where we're having consensus as we go through these final implementation and draft policies, we need to be very clear that we have consensus. And that's, that's all I have.
Anybody else? We'll move on to H, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Receiving an update on emergency planning and disaster communications, police and fire chiefs are assistants.
Mayor Myes, members of council, my name is Michael Self. I service the city as emergency management coordinator. Uh, I will be presenting part of this tonight and then, uh, Chief Weems will be presenting, uh, the second half of this. Remember what I'm looking at mine, I gotta remember to change the slides at the same time. The way that I've broken this down tonight is it says emergency and disaster response. Is the way that I view things as an emergency response is totally different than a disaster response and how we deal with things. Um, daily, we deal with emergencies here in our city. Uh, the public safety departments deal with this, do a great job each and every day. The dictionary defines emergency as an unforeseen combination of circumstances or the resulting state that calls for immediate action, an urgent need for assistance or relief. So far this year, and I can't speak as far as to the police department, but the fire department has responded to over four thousand three hundred emergencies this year. Uh, we see this is something that is acute. It may be something as simple as someone cut their finger while cooking. We see this as something that is acute. It may be something as simple as someone cut their finger while cooking supper. And to them, that's an emergency to something major like a large apartment fire or such. So emergencies, we respond to all the time. Both departments take an all-hazard approach. We train with PD and we, especially in the fire department, can do anything from water rescue to high-angle rescue, to firefighting, to vehicle rescue, to doing CPR on someone that's passed, to delivering babies. We see all ends of the spectrum in our community. And so these are immediate needs. And usually in emergency responses, we follow the operating procedures that we have in place, the standard operating procedures and the guidelines that we have in place within our department. As it states on the slide, follow emergency plans, rarely we, do we get to the emergency plans that we have in place during the daily emergencies. And, and on the next slide, you'll kind of see the emergency plans come into play. Every day, the city of Nacogdoches personnel work great together. From when a small storm blows through, working with public works, working with the street department, blocking streets and such. All departments work together great. Our mutual aid department, our partners that we see on a regular basis. When we go out in the county on accidents, on vehicle rescues, we work with the Nacogdoches County Sheriff's Office. Daily, we work on probably ten to fifteen calls per day with Nacogdoches County EMS. We have a great working relationship with them. We deal with the volunteer fire departments on both accidents, different rescue scenes, along with dealing with our mutual aid responses into their areas in the county. We have a great working relationship with the American Red Cross here in our community. And also due to the wild and urban interface that we have in our city, we do deal with the Texas Forest Service a great deal. On disaster response, to me, this goes into things such as a large severe weather outbreak, hurricanes, the COVID response that we had in 2020 and throughout the vaccination process in 2021. We had a disaster response. And when it comes to disasters, it's, to me, it's broken down. Some of these are immediate. I mean, we could have some type of disaster tonight that is unforeseen, that we did not see take place. We did not know was coming. And disasters are both man-made and natural disasters. A lot of the disasters that we experience here in Nacogdoches are forewarned. If there's a hurricane in the Gulf, we have warnings that it's potentially going to come in and touch the Texas coast. We have forewarnings ahead of time and we monitor that. Weekly, I get a weather update that I watch every Thursday. And when there's going to be potential for severe weather, it's a daily update, sometimes multiple times per day, so that we know that. During these disaster responses, that's when we go into following the actual plans. We'd work with our daily procedures that we have in place, but we go into the emergency plans. The city of Nacogdoches has what's referred to as the basic emergency plan and then twenty-two annexes that are different things following that, different little items. What we do with these plans, these plans are updated and sent to the state every five years. We use a template that the state provides us and we fill in the information that is needed for our community. And then we, there are certain measures that we must meet by the state. And when it's submitted to their plans department, we then get an approval or we get a notice back that we need to improve on the plan that's been submitted. I will say, not bragging, but over the last three years since I've been emergency manager, no plans have ever been kicked back. All plans have been approved by the state. During these disaster responses, it's an all-hands-on-deck approach with city of Nacogdoches personnel. And the directors of the city all report to the emergency operations center to where they can oversee their departments and work within the emergency management structure, which I have a slide here and a couple of slides to show you that. During disaster responses, we've worked great with Nacogdoches County. Judge Sal has been great to work with and partnering. And during disasters, sometimes if they know a hurricane's going to hit the state, the governor will pre-declare a disaster declaration. Other times, if it's immediate, it may be that Mayor Mize would declare the disaster declaration here for us and then it would be followed by the governor doing that. What has happened under COVID and other major emergencies over the last couple of years, Mayor Mize and Judge Sal have partnered together and made the same declaration to where the county and the city are on the same page. What we have also done during disasters is to partner both the county and the city in the same emergency operations center. We work with the Texas Division of Emergency Management. We're lucky here in East Texas. Our region covers all the way from Crockett to the west, to the Louisiana border to the east. And our actual regional office is in Lufkin and we have a great working relationship with them. And we also have a county liaison that is housed at one of the county offices who can assist us with that. If we do have needs, basically we work with the county. And if it cannot be filled locally here at the county, it then goes to that Lufkin office to see if anyone within our region can assist us. If it cannot be filled in the regional area, it then goes to the state operations center and they pull from within the state. Just kind of a diagram of what I've kind of talked about so far. As you see, ninety-five percent of all incidents occur type three to type five. A type five incident is something like a medical emergency where we have a two-person engine company that responds and they take care of that. It is short-lived over just a matter of minutes, the majority of the time. A level two, a type four rather incident, excuse me, is something like into a vehicle accident on North Street where our department, the police department, Nacogdoches County EMS all work. And at times, if it's a lengthy extrication, it may take an hour or so on that scene. Then going into something like a type three, which would be a fire, which basically would cause all of our stations to respond to where we might would also bring in additional personnel to backfill the stations. Those to me, type three through five is what I kind of view as the emergency-type responses that we do on a daily basis. The type one and type two is where you get into more the disaster-type response, where it, it affects a great number of people. You're bringing in entities from outside and certainly like on a type one, that's a state-type incident that has affected multiple counties and multiple areas around the state. What we do, the incident command system, we follow the National Incident Management System or what we refer to as NIMS. We don't have just a design system that we came up with. This is something that is known nationally. When we had firefighters that went to California a couple of years ago to assist with wildfires, this is the system that they're used to. Every incident that we go to, in some form or fashion, this is used. And it's basically built to scale. This is a, what you're looking at on the screen is a large-scale incident that this is not your normal house fire or such. On a normal, just say a house fire, there's going to be an incident commander. Our battalion chief is that position that looks at things, looks at the broad view of the incident. And on every incident we respond to, there's an operations section. And the way that I think of operations, this is the boots on the ground that are making things happen. When large-scale incidents take place, then we have a planning section that actually looks into the incident going, where are we right now? Where are we going with this? Where will this be if it's a hurricane? They're in the emergency operations center well ahead of time and they're looking two to three days later after the storm passes through our city. The logistics section is just another way of saying this is the folks who get the stuff that is needed for operations to do their job. Then the finance section, these folks are many times, our office manager is still doing finances and such from the COVID response where we had the vaccine clinics at the expo center. And so I know Ms. Pam and her department are still working on things from past disasters. So that continues on long after the actual disaster is over and life is going back to normal for the citizens. What we do, how we kind of do this, is we do a unified type command. If there was a major incident today, Chief Kiplinger and Chief Weems would be the incident commanders for the city of Nacogdoches. If it was something big enough that affected both Nacogdoches, the city and the county, then the sheriff would be involved in that and also a representative from the county judge's office. Where you see just underneath incident commander to the right where it says liaison officer, this is where Mr. Canizares and Judge Sal would be. And this is where they can speak to, they're working with, should Representative Clardy want to come in and see what's going on in Nacogdoches. They would be the point of contacts with that. They are not, they have a direct line to the incident commanders, but they do not necessarily tell them exactly how, what tactics and such to be done. As you can see underneath incident commander to the left is the position of public information officer. This works for the incident commanders. What they would do is give daily reports and Chief Weems will speak more to kind of the plan that we have in place as far as to how we communicate during disasters. Before he comes up, I'll be happy to answer any questions on anything that I presented tonight.
Any questions?
My questions are just real practical questions. I, I'm, this is just really great. What, do we have shelters that we're going to open? And do we know which, do we have a hierarchy of shelters if there's some kind of like, for example, a tornado? I have questions about electricity. How do you get prioritized on the electric grid, particularly for Independence Manor, if that's possible?
Sheltering, we have one city-owned and operated shelter and that's the rec center. What we have chosen to do over the last several incidents, we want to keep that for the citizens of Nacogdoches, rather than folks evacuating from the Gulf Coast, coming and filling our shelter and then we're hit by the hurricane and we have nowhere to shelter our own residents.
As we were.
We've really kind of advised folks to follow this. The state has gone to more of a policy of sending folks more inland. Instead of having Nacogdoches with twelve hundred people at ten shelters and Lufkin having twelve hundred people at ten shelters, they're really pushing them more inland to San Antonio, our own up to the Dallas area where they have huge congregate shelters. So we do have that. I know some of Mr. Bray's staff worked with the American Red Cross recently and did training on how to operate a shelter. You may see on North Street at the fire station on the north side, there's an American Red Cross trailer. They have pre-positioned, I believe it's enough equipment for either two hundred or two hundred and fifty residents where that's already here. If we call and say, we need a shelter set up at the rec center, they pull out the rec center and they're set up to assist us in that.
Okay. So the, so the Red Cross would come and help operate the shelter at the rec?
Yes. There would be city staff plus American Red Cross volunteers.
I am one, by the way, and, and helped get the training in our church and everything.
And my understanding, you asked regarding electricity, we do have contacts with the upper management of Encore to where we can request things to be prioritized. Certainly there may be delays according to the amount of damage that has occurred to the infrastructure.
So, so if we could make sure that Independence Manor, it, it used to be prioritized. And then it was not during the snowpocalypse or whatever. And they have lifts, beds, oxygen, mattresses, wheelchairs. And they met several residents, as you all know, because you all helped them, you know, can't function and may, it may be life-threatening. So if we can get them prioritized, I don't know how to do it, so.
Okay, certainly. I will put that down and we, during any major storm outbreaks and such, we will keep them in mind to work with Encore towards restoring their power as quickly as possible.
And also highlighting, I know of the system we have, the, the emergency response system, I mean, the emergency, what's the NACWIS? NACWIS Alert System. It doesn't incorporate some things that the East Texas Council of Governments has that actually specifies what kinds of needs people with, with disabilities have. So our system doesn't do that. But on the other hand, we're small enough, I think, that if we know there's a group of people who have this particular kind of need, we could just be sensitive and go out there. Because we aren't, we're not going to change systems, but.
And as a note, just the council's aware of what we did, we had a person each day, when we would have our, during winter storm Yuri, we would have our morning briefing at the emergency operations center. What we would then do, this, we had a captain with the fire department that would go in person to each of the nursing homes. And then during the afternoon would go back and make sure that all their needs were met. So we worked towards that, taking care of the nursing homes. And we will certainly add Independence Manor to that list.
And they need to do some things too. And I think they're going to be meeting on Thursday. And there are some things that they can do internally to help and check on other residents. But thank you very much for that.
No problem.
I don't, that's part of the reason that I wanted, I just wanted to hear how we were going to house people. And I don't know that we need, I mean, I asked to find out, to have this on the agenda. So I don't know if we need a lot more, because I'm happy where we are. So I've, I know Mayor Mize is looking to this clock, so, I mean.
It's eight twenty. We've got a few more to go.
I'll turn it over to Chief Weems quickly.
Thank you. We appreciate the information.
Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Chief Self. You did a fantastic job explaining it. And now I don't have to. I'll make this short. As you know, combined communications, they cover Nacogdoches Sheriff's Department, Police Department, the volunteer fire departments across the county and the city fire department, as well as EMS. So they're kind of spread out. Right now, we only have three on duty at any given time. Normally, we have four. We're working on that. But I'll make this short and sweet. So we broke it down into three tiers for communication purposes. And this is communication to the public. So tier one is what Chief Self was talking about is a disaster. So we need to keep the public updated. And in doing so, that's why we're in the process of trying to hire a PIO for the city. And that's going to be that person's responsibility. And that's just an example of preparing for a hurricane or snowpocalypse or whatever occurs at the time. And so tier two is where the police department lives and sometimes the fire department. And that's fluid, a fluid situation is acute and it's action-oriented. So an example for that is the escaped prisoner that went to Garrison. Now that covers a lot of territory there because then you get into who's in command. But let's just say it happened here and it, it was confined here. So what we would do is send out an alert, either using the radius or the polygon in a certain area where the escaped prisoner was last seen. And in order to lock your doors, call if you see suspicious activity, things like that. So that's, that's a fluid acute situation. That's happening right now and it's, it's going a hundred miles an hour. And so that's where our dispatch comes in, into play. So the first one's going to be the, the PIO with, we would pepper it with some of our dispatchers also. That's tier one. Tier two is mainly our dispatchers or whoever takes that role at that, any given time. And then, and then we're going to tier three, which is a public notice, basically informing the public like a boil water notice. So that's going to be any department in the city that, that's affected, the public's affected by it. So we would send that out on the NACWIS, which is hyper-reach basically, and we're sharing with the county. And other than that, I can break it down to, just like I explained, communication dispatchers are on tier two. That's emergency notifications and situational updates. Fire and police command staff, they'll very rarely give out instructions or, or any information because they're busy trying to do the job, not talk about the job. And then the PIO, which is the one we're looking for currently, we do have Brett Ayers, the sergeant. He's a PIO for the police department. And we have Jessica Sal, who is the temporary PIO for the city. And so that would be the people that are responsible for the tier one and tier two, the situational updates and emergency notifications. Other than that, we are in the process of getting very familiar with this new system, since we swapped over. And to touch on the, to touch on the special needs, I know there's a spot on this new program for special needs where you can check the box. And I think that comes into play when we're talking about Independence Manor. So I think that we can utilize that. That way we notify them, that, well, we'll notify the, the ones that are checked, special needs. And then we can check on them also, like we did. We did that during the, the snowpocalypse, as you called it. And so we could continue to do this with more accuracy now that we have this program in place.
So what I was referencing, if I may add, is that there are other ones that actually say exactly what their needs are. Do they need oxygen? Do they need, you know, and we, you know, we don't necessarily have to get that granular. You know, and we, you know, we don't necessarily have to get that granular, but if we, if we are aware of who needs what and some of, you know, the pockets of.
And so basically what we need to do since we, that was a learning experience. And so we would add them, like he said, to the nursing home list to where they would be on routine checks periodically throughout the event. Is there any other questions?
One other little one. I think this is really helpful. People have been asking me about what's going to happen, even, even some people who are Red Cross volunteers. Wait a minute, what are we opening? To just maybe do a little summary of what happens and that we're no longer going to be hosting everybody from New Orleans or, you know, things like that. So we know we're not preparing for that. I think maybe even something in the paper, hey, this is, this is what you should look out for. This is what you should do. I think it would be very, very helpful.
Right.
So really appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
I would just say, I know that at the beginning of this, Chief Self was mentioning the, the emergency operations plan. Just as it's convenient, if y'all could send that out to the council, just for our review, just so we can see it.
I think he just updated it, correct? They have to be updated every five years and that's in different annexes. So they're not all updated at the same time.
And I will say this, he needs to be commended for not having it kicked back. That's, that is impressive because I know that another entity that I've been involved in has had several times where the basic plan gets kicked back. So congratulations on that.
So yes, we, we can make arrangements for that.
Anything else? Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your time. Thanks both of you. Okay, we'll move on to I hold a discussion regarding the city purchasing from local vendors. Councilmember Athleen Bellinger.
So I would like to request that this item be moved to another meeting. And all we need is an update on how, as, as you included in the materials, we were going to try and see how it would be that we just make an active effort to purchase. So maybe we can get an update on how that active effort has.
You have an item coming up in your.
Which meeting?
The 10th of January to look at adopting a local by policy ordinance. So can we do it then?
That's why we were trying to push it off because we knew that.
Oh, sure. So.
Yeah, it was in the, it was in the agenda information. It was in the agenda information sheet that we were bringing that to you all at your first meeting out in January.
So my question was, do we need it or has, has the, but we allow.
It's, it's part of our purch, it's part of our purchasing policy that we need to update. And so we just want to include that because you all mentioned that you wanted to buy local and we have some state laws that we can abide by and we want to do that and so.
I think it would be interesting for us to hear the process that Mr. Flores walks through as he makes purchases. I think that's, I think that's really interesting. Just tell us kind of what's in his mind and how he's doing it. We know there's law that, that takes care of that and, and if it's an ordinance or something, that's fine too. But I'd like, I'd like to hear from him.
Okay, we can do that.
Where's my intent?
Okay. Well, with that, we're finished with our regular agenda and we will adjourn to executive session at 8:31. Thank you all for being here and thank you all for your presentations. Executive sessions are for city council to receive information and deliberate on matters specified in subchapter D of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Council may reconvene in open session to vote on the matter and a deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under government code section 551.087 and deliberation regarding real property under government code section 551.072. It is 9:21 and we are returning from executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section. 551.087 and 551.072 of the Open Meetings Act. Being no action, we adjourn.